Cunningham.
Present.
Mrs. Perkins.
Here.
Mr. Wooster.
Here.
And Mr. Marsh.
Here. Mr. Wooster, over to you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the agenda for closed session to add leave status and performance of a classified employee, assignment of additional duties, and pay for possible two central office employees, breach of contract situation, and approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick.
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Wooster.
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes. Motion passes. Item 4.1, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the agenda for open session to add one additional FTE for the remainder of the school year and to move Agenda Item 16.1 Annual Audit to 12.2 Special Presentations and approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just for the board's information, the reason we're moving the special presentation around is because we've got some folks that are going to be dialing in for video calls, so we're breaking the order a bit. Yeah, take a vote, ma'am.
Mr. Colick.
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Wooster.
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes. Motion passes. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak in closed session?
No, sir.
Okay. And on that, we will go into...
Oh, we gotta make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to go into closed session to review the personnel report posted on Board Docs under Personnel tab number 18.1 as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 for purposes of discussion and consideration of prospective candidates of Olive White Public Schools for employment, contract changes, transfers, salary adjustments, supplemental contracts, deletions, supplemental pay, resignations of Olive White County Public Schools employees, and to discuss two personnel matters as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. And motion to go into closed session to discuss the leave status and performance of a classified employee and assignment of additional duties and pay for possible two central office employees as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. Motion to go into closed session to receive briefing from staff regarding a breach of contract situation involving a vendor and to receive legal advice regarding same where consultation and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 and A8.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? That was a mouthful, huh? I tried to get you out of it. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Colick.
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Wooster.
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes. Now, we'll go into closed session.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody ready?
Yeah.
You all ready over there?
Yep, let's go for it.
Olive White County School Boards in session?
Sir.
Mr. Chair, I move that the closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as required by Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, and certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. Mr. Wooster?
Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. It's January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We are located in Westside Elementary School for our first regular meeting of two thousand and twenty-five. Kick it right off with our Olive White Achievers. Just get this, get this meeting going. Mrs. Briggs, over to you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The vision for Olive White County Schools is to create a learning environment that will enable every child to discover his or her unique gifts and talents. The Olive White Achiever section of our board meeting gives us an opportunity to recognize and celebrate our students and staff for their unique talents and gifts. First, we're going to start with a recognition from Smithville High School, and I think Ms. Getz is going to assist. Yep. So even though I went over the logistics when your name is called for recognition, please come forward. If you have a certificate that you were given in advance, bring that with you, and Ms. Getz is going to give you a pen. We're going to have you stand in front so we can celebrate you in front of the board. So welding instructor Paul Miller received the two thousand twenty-four Section Educator Award from the American Welding Society in recognition of his significant contributions to the society and the welding industry. This prestigious award celebrates educators who have excelled in advancing the welding knowledge of students through programs such as apprenticeships, corporate training, and other educational initiatives. In the summer of two thousand twenty-four, Miller attended the Welding Instructors Institute at AWS Headquarters in Florida, and this program allowed him to network with instructors from across the nation, collaborate on industry trends, and refine classroom techniques to better equip students with essential skills. Thanks to Mr. Miller's dedication and leadership, IWCS has achieved recognition as an accredited educational institution member of the American Welding Society, and we congratulate Mr. Miller on all his accomplishments. Thank you, Mr. Miller. And now, we're going to have you come over here to the backdrop where Mr. Elliott will get a photo for posterity. We're going to move on to our next honorees, and they are from Windsor High School. The Windsor High School Drama Team won the VHSL Two A Regional Tournament and participated in the state tournament where they placed fourth. We are happy to recognize them tonight for their outstanding accomplishments. The team is coached by Virginia Beatty Riffle. Team members are, and please come forward when your name is called, and stay up front until we have all the team members here. Pearl Anderson, Grace Cox, Tramel Duck, Caleb Feliciano, Diana Gonzalez Amaya, Christina Key Towns, and if you would face the board, there we go, and just scooch on down so we make sure we get everybody in here. Journey Johnson, Jason Langford, Mary Lewis, Nicolette Lozano Neview, Allison Martins, McKinley Moore, Xavier Pearson, Hunter Redd, Danielle Requena, Evelyn Rubio, Charlene Sanderson, Isabel Sullen, Madison Turner, Samira Ward, Tyler Wood, Gracie Rumbach, and Connor Walters. Come on down. And Gracie and Connor received the Best Actor Award for the region. Yay! So a big congratulations to the entire team, and at this point, we're going to have you guys head over to the backdrop. Mr. Elliott's going to get a photo, and as you, yes, sir.
Ms. Briggs, how many of you are going to be on Beetlejuice Saturday? In the, in the play Saturday?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
There's your shameless plug.
That's right. Yes, this fine group will be performing Beetlejuice this weekend. Please put it on your calendar to attend. Our very own Connor Walters is, yeah, and we won't, we will not say it anymore. Very good. All right.
Ms. Briggs?
Yes.
What time is the play on Saturday? So everybody knows.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. And as soon as they stop smiling, I'm going to get that information for you. Say that one more time? One and six. And I'm sure they can go to the Windsor High School website. Uh huh, says Ms. Key back there. Go to the Windsor High School website to find out more about purchasing tickets. And the Windsor High School Facebook page. Yes. No shame in those plugs. Very good. All right, moving along, we're going to do our Seniors of the Month tonight. From Windsor High School, the Senior of the Month for January is Kayden Pierce. Come on up, Kayden. Kayden Pierce stands out due to his diligence, quiet determination, and strong work ethic. Whether it's excelling in cross-country and track, earning the Coach's Choice Award, or contributing thoughtful creativity to class projects, Kayden consistently demonstrates a commitment to excellence. His ability to listen more than he speaks allows him to be a thoughtful team member and an attentive student. His passion for the outdoors reflects a sense of balance and self-awareness, while his experience in community service through his church highlights his compassion and dedication to helping others. This month, Kayden displayed exceptional initiative and creativity by contributing to a collaborative psychology project. He played a key role in designing a theme park where he helped brainstorm names, design the layout, and bring it to life with detailed drawings and vibrant color. His patience, focus, and teamwork were on full display throughout the process. Additionally, he continued to support his classmates in pre-calculus by offering help to those struggling with difficult concepts, demonstrating his willingness to uplift those around him. Quote, "Kayden consistently demonstrates exceptional effort and dedication in class. Kayden's positive attitude and strong work ethic speaks volumes and makes him a standout student. He has been able to maintain his excellent academics alongside excelling in his extracurriculars like cross-country. It has been a pleasure being his teacher this year. He has such a bright future ahead of him." And that's from Ms. Macy Sauber, psychology teacher. Kayden is currently focusing on obtaining a general studies degree from Camp Community College while exploring his options for the future. Congratulations, Kayden. And we'll have you go over here to the backdrop to get a photo. Family members, that's a great time to come up and get a picture, and we'll gladly let you hop in the picture and get a photo of you as well. Absolutely. Very good. The Senior of the Month for January from Smithville High School is William Flyth III. William is an exemplary student athlete who consistently excels both in the classroom and on the athletic field. His warm personality, positive attitude, and impeccable work ethic make him a role model for his peers and a valued member of the Smithville High School community. In academics, William demonstrates strong communication skills, exceptional organization, and the ability to work independently while also collaborating effectively with his classmates. His dedication to his studies is matched by his involvement in extracurricular activities, including his membership in the Interact Club, where he helps improve the school's climate and culture. On the athletic field, William has achieved remarkable success. As a member of the football team, he has earned numerous awards and honors during his four-year career, including First Team All Bay Rivers District, First Team All Region Four A, and Class Four A Second Team All State. William is also a valued member of the track team where his work ethic and determination continue to shine. Beyond school, William is actively involved in his church, Mount Niebo Baptist Church, where he serves as an usher and as the youth president. His commitment to his faith and community further highlights his leadership and character. Ms. Pro, who nominated William for this recognition, shares, "I feel that William Flyth III deserves to be recognized because he is an exemplary student athlete. He is respectful and a role model for his peers. He takes his academics seriously and is involved in many other positive interests outside of the school. Looking ahead, William plans to play football in college and pursue a degree in business. He has applied to Old Dominion University, Fairham College, Hamden-Sidney College, and Bridgewater College." Congratulations, William. Very good. We'll have you go over there. And if the name sounds familiar, yes, his dad, Mr. Flyth, is a teacher at Georgie Tyler Middle School for us. His very, very proud dad and his very proud mom. And while they're wrapping up photos, let me say that's going to conclude Olive White Achievers for tonight. Thanks to everyone who came out and the friends and family that came to support them. Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Kramer. I'm Wyatt Napier, a fifth-grade student in Ms. Barard's class and the president of the Junior Beta Club at Carsville. Tonight, we will be sharing with you how science has taken on an active role in our school. First, I would like the other Carsville Bulldogs to introduce themselves.
I'm Stuart Lewis. I'm a fifth grader out of Ms. Ball's search class and Ms. Pye's fifth grade class.
I'm Allison Smith, and I'm in Ms. Pye's fifth grade class.
I'm Hayden Polter, and I'm in Ms. Harris' fourth grade class.
I'm Mason Smith, and I'm in Ms. Hubble's third grade class.
My name is Zoe Sharp, and I'm in Ms. Brattle's second grade class.
My name is Asher Johnson, and I'm in Ms. B grade's first grade class.
I'm Emma Sures. I'm in Ms. Way's kindergarten, kindergarten class.
My name is Sophia Hooper, and my name is, and I, and I'm in Ms., and I'm in Ms. Steiner's class.
Science at Carsville Elementary is engaging, electrifying, and everywhere. Carsville Elementary, science is everywhere. Classroom lessons, off-campus enrichment, and community partnerships. We even have hall displays that encourage us to think like scientists.
These were, we were squeezing pom-poms out of the water, and we were making Play-Doh. And we were, then the bells were magnetic, like, like the, um, like the magnetic box.
We went to pumpkin pie. We picked out our own pumpkin. We came back to school. We scooped out the seeds. We counted the seeds.
In first grade, we went to Franklin Boulevard. We learned about force, motion, and energy.
Second graders went to the Virginia Living Museum. We learned about animals and how they behave in different types of weather.
All students from pre-K to fifth graders had the opportunity to participate in the greatest show on earth, a science circus, on December sixteenth. We participated in our first science circus where teachers and community partners were the ring masters while students rotated through and conducted fun, engaging in SOL scientific investigations. It was amazing. We can't wait for the next one.
On Wednesday, November twentieth, community partners PSWCE and NRCS presented live processes lessons through fifth, through pre-K to fifth-grade students at Carsville Elementary. While planting the plants for the new spring salad, all students reviewed the life, the life cycle of plants and careers in agriculture. The, the bottom pictures show how the plants are thriving and growing.
At least every other week, we conduct scientific experiments in fifth grade. Each experiment goes through the scientific method where we make a prediction, test the prediction, record the data, and draw a conclusion. We work in groups from two to four students and test the hypothesis. Our teachers let us do trials by ourselves and then share, share the results. Conducting experiments is fun.
The Carsville search team went to the Virginia Aquarium to learn about animals, their adaptations, and how they use their adaptations. We also observed wooden trolls outside of the aquarium on the trail that portrayed a story on how we, we should take care of the environment. We took notes and recorded data. We put the notes in our out school, in our school journals and put it in, to use it in our culminating event.
We have had lots of support from our community partners. Science is alive at Carsville. We invite you to come out and see all of the great things that are happening.
Think like a scientist, we have events that help us learn science and scientific experiments to encourage us to think like scientists.
Very well. Thank you. Anybody else? Big round of applause. Any comments? Questions? So one young lady said, "You counted the seeds in a pumpkin? How many seeds are in it?"
Ten hundred?
Ten hundred. Very good. Well, I forget, I think it was a young man on the left. He said, "You, you learned how to think like a scientist. How does one think like a scientist?"
To think like a scientist, we have events that help us learn science and scientific experiments to encourage us to think like scientists.
Very well. Thank you. Anybody else? Big round of applause. Mr. Hawkins, I've unmuted. Can you hear me okay? Mr. Hawkins, I've unmuted, can you hear me okay? I can't hear you, okay, hold on. Oh, it says you're muted.
That's my fault, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, I can, so can the board hear him okay? Mr. Marsh, can you hear him okay?
I think so, try it again.
You can't hear him?
I do, I did not hear you.
Check, 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 check.
Can you hear us, Mr. Hawkins?
All right, let's try that again. Check, 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 check.
Can, can you hear me, I can hear you.
I hear you.
Yes, we can hear you. Good evening. I'm very pleased to introduce Erin Hawkins from Robinson Farmer Cox. He is the partner for the audit firm that conducted our general audit this year. So take it away.
We're glad to have you here, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, sorry about that. That's correct, yep, I'm a partner in charge, we call ourselves members at, at RFC, just because we're, just of how we're structured as a company, so we call ourselves members, but synonymous with partner. And so, yes, I was the partner in charge for the entire Olive White County Audit, including the component units, which the school board is a component unit of the county. And I'm, I also talked to you all last year, I think, and presented the results of the audit, and didn't have a lot of great things to talk about last year. But this year, I have a lot of great things to talk about, so these, the, these presentations always go much better when I have a lot of great, positive things to say. So, I'm going to, and I don't know if I'm, I don't know that I have the ability to share my screen, and, and I may not need to. I won't, I won't share your screen, but I'll just kind of go over some things with you from the audit process. First and foremost, Leesel Devery did such a fantastic job getting things turned around in the finance department. I know we've been doing the audit, I think, since fiscal year 2021, so this was our fourth year doing the audit, and this was leaps and bounds the most prepared that the school board has been for the audit. And I just can't say enough about the, just the, the great turnaround that's happened in the, in the finance department in that area. And so, we came in, did our, we did preliminary fieldwork over the summer, and then we came back and did our final fieldwork in the fall. And then was able to have everything completed and filed on time with the state this year, and so a lot of great things. And, and so, kind of moving forward though, and, and talking about maybe some more specific things on the audit itself. I know last year, I had several findings to talk about, some of which pertained to the school board. And the one of which was just on financial reporting in general and, and material adjustments that we had to make for FY23. And when I talk about having to make adjustments, so when we first begin an audit, we get what's called a trial balance, which comes from, we get one from the accounting's accounting system, and then we get one from the school board's accounting system. And as we audit, the numbers that are on that trial balance, we, we put our little check marks, tick marks for paper references, and, but if a balance isn't correct, and we have to make an adjustment to that balance, that's what we mean by having to make auditary adjustments, is to take it from what we had to what's appropriate and what's correct to report for, for financial statement or reporting purposes. And so, in 20, in FY23, we had, we had several material adjustments that we had to make, we did not have to make those material adjustments this year, so there was corrective action taken on that finding. I will say, we did have, the last year we had, last year we had 2023 dash 002, which was a federal finding related to the child nutrition cluster program. That is a repeat finding for this year, so if I do have one negative thing to say, that is it. But it, it kind of comes with a little bit of a caveat in that, and I always mess this up when I'm trying to explain it, but I'm, I'll do my best. And, and so, for FY23, you know, when we did that audit, we let you all know about the problems that we were seeing with the free and reduced meal applications, which is what this finding is in relation to, people being approved for the wrong level, whether it was free versus reduced versus denied. For FY23, we let you all know about that probably in January of '24. So, well, by that time, you had already done your free and reduced meal applications for FY24, because you would have done that in the fall of '23. So, that's why this finding is, is present again, is that, you know, those same problems were occurring at that time. So, it's hopeful that, that these problems have been corrected and won't be a problem for, for FY25. And then, I mean, we had a third finding last, and for FY23 that we talked about, which was not finally the annual school report on time, there was corrective action taken on that, so there's no finding related to the annual school report. I believe, I don't even think we had anything on our, we do a separate management letter that we issue to the county audit, where we talk about things that don't rise to the level of findings, but just things that we make them aware of, just certain little internal control improvements that can be made. And we had three items on that management layer this year, but none were related to the school board, so nothing to report there. I'm hoping everyone's heard everything I've just said, as I, as I've rambled on for the past five to 10 minutes, but I'm glad to try to answer any questions that you have for me.
I, I think everybody's pretty pleased to hear this, sir. If I, if I recall, this time last year, with all the negative findings that we had for last year, the expectation for this year's audit was that it would be more intrusive than the prior. Is that the case? Did you guys dig into the weeds a bit more this year than you did last year?
Well, I don't know that that's necessarily the case. I mean, each audit, you know, is, is a risk-based approach, and we do, you know, controls testing that really direct where the next of our procedures go. And so, when we come in, in the summer, and we do a lot of our controls testing and things like that, that really determines, are we having problems with controls? Do we need to perform any further digging into certain areas? Possibly in some areas that was the case, but, you know, other than the findings that were, you know, present last year, obviously, we have to follow up on those in the current year. But I don't, but I don't know that it necessarily means that there's any, you know, other than the findings, I don't know that there's any, there was any reason for doing any other further, you know, extensive digging into certain areas. Unless, unless that, you know, specific, a specific thing that popped up during the audit process would have led us to do that.
Got it. Dr. Kramer, you got anything?
I do not for the auditor. I'm very pleased, obviously, and gratified with the results. I think a huge commendation to our school division in general for the sacrifices that were made, the consultants we brought on board early on, Dr. Jim Roberts and Mr. Steve Jenkins. And absolutely, a huge thank you to our current CFO, Mrs. Leesel Devery. So if anything, a well-deserved round of applause for all who have us in this place, so thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Kramer, last year, you basically had a target on your chest at this time, and, and you took a lot of hits from all of us. So I want to commend you for your leadership this past year in bringing on the right people and doing the right things to get us where we are today. So I commend you for that, sir.
Anybody else? Mr. Devery, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Outstanding. Sir, we, if you have anything else to add, the floor is yours, otherwise, we won't hold you up, and we appreciate you dialing in tonight to give us some very welcome to positive news.
I don't, thank you.
All right, well, we'll see this time next year, maybe.
Very good, you all have a nice evening, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good deal.
Excellent.
Good deal. Okay, let's see, 13-1 is a request to speak. Madam Clerk?
In accordance to policy BDDH-dash-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific, state the issues for the board's consideration, and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the board clerk. Please do not approach the board members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the school board only in a closed meeting. And first, we have Ms. Tiffany Parker.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Kramer. I have provided to the clerk notes of what I'll be speaking upon this evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tiffany Parker, and I'm here as a concerned parent and advocate for our children's safety and education. Tonight, I want to address a pressing issue that directly impacts the well-being of our students, the state of our school transportation system. Over the past month, I've had the privilege of meeting with Dr. Coleman, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Matthew Fike, Coordinator of Transportation, and Andrew Sullivan, Fleet Supervisor, to understand the challenges facing our transportation department. What I learned was both enlightening and deeply concerning. I'd like to share some key points with you tonight. Currently, 44% of our buses are over 15 years old, with mileage approaching or exceeding 300,000 miles. This poses a significant safety risk, as VDOT recommends retiring buses at this point due to wear and tear that may make them less reliable and more prone to mechanical failures. While the department is receiving five new buses this year, at least three buses must be retired, resulting in a net gain of only two buses. At this rate, it would take 15 years just to meet the number of buses truly needed, a timeline that is neither practical nor acceptable. One of the major barriers to address, addressing this issue is the way bus funding is currently structured. The cost of new buses is not included in the school's regular budget, but is instead placed in the Board of Supervisors' capital improvement budget. This means the number of new buses allocated each year is unpredictable and subject to the Board of Supervisors' discretion. While we are grateful for the five bus, new buses this year, there is no guarantee that we will receive the same support in the future. This inconsistency makes long-term planning nearly impossible for our transportation department. Our district also faces a critical shortage of bus drivers, largely due to uncompetitive pay. Neighborhood counties offer higher wages, making it difficult for us to attract and retain qualified drivers. To remain competitive, our district needs to implement at least an 8% pay increase for drivers. Without this, the burden falls on existing staff and creates further inefficiencies in an already strained system. I'm here tonight not just to highlight these issues, but to ask for your partnership in addressing them. Specifically, I am urging the board to advocate for the inclusion of new bus purchases as a recurring line item on the regular budget, ensuring consistent funding year over year. Work with the Board of Supervisors to secure the funding needed to modernize our fleet at a faster pace. And three, prioritize driver pay increases to address the shortage and remain competitive with neighboring districts. Our children deserve better. They deserve a transportation system that is safe, reliable, and efficient. Together, we can make this a reality, but we must act now before this crisis grows even greater. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our students and community. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide further information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Sarah Matthews?
Good evening. We're here representing Western Tidewater Community Services Board in our Olive White Counseling Center, newly located in the Food Lion Shopping Center on South Church Street. We are here excited to announce an upcoming opportunity for everyone to engage directly with the key figures in our agency. We'll be hosting a town hall meeting that allows you to ask questions and engage in dialogue with our panel of experts. This town hall will be held on January 23rd at 6:00 PM at our Olive White Counseling Center. This is an opportunity to raise issues that matter most to you and the community, whether it's about our programs, services, or future plans. We want this town hall to be a transparent and open space for conversation, and your participation is key to making it a success. We look forward to your questions and to an engaging, productive dialogue. You can find further event details on our website, wtcsb.org, or on our Facebook page, Western Tidewater Community Services Board. Thank you again, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, ladies. Could you, could you make sure that someone in staff has your contact information written down so we can?
Say that one more time.
Could you make sure, maybe Ms. Sullivan, could you grab the lady's contact?
She's emailed me.
You have it on email?
You're the, you emailed me correctly, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was our last speaker.
Okay. Is everybody good, or we need to take five? We're good? Okay, student liaisons.
This month at Smithfield High School, they had cap and gown portraits for the seniors. The seniors who signed up went down to the auditorium at different points during the day, and the caps and gowns were provided. The seniors only had to wear the correct attire and everything needed. Additionally, this year, at Smithfield High School, we'll be sending students to Beta Convention in February for the first time, and I, I think it's either ever or, I just know it's been a long period of time since they've ever done this. Smithfield will have students competing in the marketing division, a speech, and drawing, among other categories. And on March 1st, prom tickets are going to be going on sale. The theme for prom, which is May 3rd, is Night at the Casino or Las Vegas. Tickets are going to be $50 before spring break and, and $60 afterwards. Additionally, this month, exams will be on the 23rd and 24th, so it, for students who don't have exams, like the SOL days, they don't have to come in. And on the subject of exams, there's also a new policy where six or more absences, you have to take an exam. But there is an appeal form that students were emailed, and that's on the website, and if they do appeal, by the 20th of January, they may be able to be exempt from these.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, so, yeah, the 7th and 8th is when Windsor's Beta Convention is. And then, I would like to congratulate our Scholastic Bowl team on placing first in the district championships. And then, as Ms. Briggs did a great job of mentioning, we do have a school play, Beetlejuice Junior, at Saturday. It's at 1:00 PM or 6:00 PM, and you can go on the website and see it on the calendar and purchase your tickets at GoFan. And then, if you have any more details, you can email me, but we would love to see all of y'all there in support. Just maintaining the school's cleanliness, cleanliness, we would, I mean, we have wallflowers right now, and it's kind of embarrassing when somebody professional walks in, and we have to cover up the stench of our schools with wallflowers. And this isn't a stab at the custodial staff, because, I mean, they're doing all they can, but I think it's just the lack of staff provided. I know we have one, we have one custodian during the day, I'm not sure about the night staff, but I, I think we definitely need more, more hands on deck for that, for Windsor High School. But then, I would like to shout out Ms. Outland. As a former Bulldog, I love to see the stuff that she's doing at Carsville with all of the presentations she presents here and the outdoor stuff, and she's doing great things. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Connor. Doc, I think this is a reoccurring event over at the high school. Is this something we're working on and we're aware of?
Yes, this is something that we're working through at Windsor High School. Some of the, of-
Some of the other schools, we had minor issues, but Windsor High School, as Mr. Walters had just pointed out, has had more issues than anyone else this year. At this time, we did a, we just performed a complete turnover of staff at Windsor High School, so we're rolling out a, just a new way of management at Windsor High School. So it is a reoccurring issue, as he stated, but we're trying to work through the etches of that.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Keep this posted, and I'm sure Mr. Connors will, Mr. Walters will too.
Absolutely. And truly, Ms. Carroll is on top of it every single day. She's emailing us, she's letting us know, sometimes morning and noon, of what's going on in the building. So she's been very, very intricate in helping us to decipher whether it's evening crew, morning crew, or what's going on. So I just want to make sure I bring in ready there.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I will be very shortly, in fact, this month, meeting with our student advisory. And Cameron, we're going to add you to that group as well, to better assess what's occurring in our schools from the perspective of our students. Additionally, we will be conducting facilities walks with our contractor, ABM, along with the principals of all of our buildings and Dr. Coleman. So we do plan to get this rectified very shortly. So some of this is first time I'm hearing this, but yes, that is certainly a bit concerning and something we certainly need to address, so we certainly will be doing that.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. See you Saturday. All right, this takes us to item fifteen point one. It's our action item. Ms. Taveri?
Good evening. The resolution before you is requesting that the County Board of Supervisors reappropriate the surplus funds from fiscal year twenty-four in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. In fiscal year twenty-three, the local contribution for the textbook fund was pulled back in order to help offset the deficit that year. So accordingly, since we didn't make the full funding in fiscal year twenty-three, my recommendation is to take these funds and put them towards the textbook fund.
So in layman's terms, we're putting the money back where it was?
Yes, sir.
As much as we can?
Yes, sir. This is county local funds.
And I know that you liaise with the county CFO often. Are they anticipating this?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Board, any questions, comments? Okay. You want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept a resolution requesting reappropriation of funds from fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Motion? Can we get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. All right, item fifteen point two, I believe that's Dr. Coleman?
Mr. Chair, school board members, they intend to award the Carrollton HVAC. There were some questions that were sent out, but I want to make sure that everyone understands what's going on with the Carrollton HVAC at this time. Of course, the original estimate and budget of cost for this project was seven million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. That is the amount based off of the quote that was sent off. Now, after we did the RFP, sent that out, received all the bids in, the lowest of the three bids was five million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. That's a one million, six hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollar savings. Well, we'll say below budget. Now, RRMM would highly recommend for the school system to hold on to a portion of the money for construction contingency, as a five percent. Now, other five percent of the construction costs as a common safe practice in industry for contingency. If you remember correctly, when we built the Hardy, the new Hardy Elementary School, we did a five percent contingency at that time, too. And those funds was used as incidents occurred that we couldn't, that was unforeseen. So that is what we're doing right now. So five million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars, but that is without any contingency built in. So I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on the initial costs and the calls for it now. Now, some of the costs that we might need to ensure that we're focusing on, cost of county reviews, inspections, permitting fees, of course, once again, unforeseen conditions. And we can anticipate these change order costs to range from one percent to two percent of the project. And that's between eighty-five thousand and one hundred and fourteen thousand. Now, if we do carry the contingency from above, we would actually cover those costs from the contingency. So overall, we're asking, once these bids come in, we bid for seven point four million. It came in at five point six million at this time. But to freeze everything before we send any money back, and make sure that we have the contingency, and make sure that everything is covered. So that's the request right there.
What do you mean when you say freeze everything? Like, the county's already authorized us for seven point three-three million dollars, right? That money's already been bonded out.
Absolutely.
So the money's there.
Right.
If I understand, this is a request just to lock these folks in on an estimate?
It is. It is locking them in on the estimate, but also locking the county in on the seven point four. The county has appropriated those funds, but at the same time, the bid docs will go back to the county, and the bid docs will say five point six million. So once the bid docs state five point six million, the county might foresee that, okay, now that it's five, it's cheaper, so we can take those funds and we can move those funds over here, or push those funds back to pay the bid bond down. So I just need, I just would like the board to understand, just looking for a freeze on those, on those funds until we can actually work through the whole process.
In other words, you don't want anyone getting overzealous that we saved one point six million?
Exactly. Not until the project is completely over, the same way we did with New Hardy.
Refresh the board, how much money did we pay RRMM in architectural fees for this? Because that's a part of that seven point three million, right?
It is. The architectural and engineering fees was four hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. So that was for the architectural fees, engineering fees, and to produce the RFP, to get all the information that we have at this time.
So you take the five percent, the architectural fees, and then a contingency. There ain't a whole lot of fluff left over. There is some, but there's not a whole lot.
It is not. It is not. The ordering of the bigger devices, the chillers and different things of that nature, it needs to be exact. We need to hit it right on exactly. So I think that we have the companies in place with JRC to make those orders occur and to move forward.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, sir.
So JRC, okay, they've got the lowest bid.
Yes, sir.
Are they, in fact, going to be the best value?
Now, based off of RRMM and all of the work that they have done with the county and with several different agencies, JRC is recommended by RRMM. So it's a win-win situation. Not only were they the lowest bidder, but RRMM is recognizing them as one of the best out there.
Okay, because my concern is that we would again go with the lowest bidder and not have everything done to level that we need to.
Absolutely.
And a few years be back again, you know, for more repairs. So that's a concern that I've got.
Yes, sir. And what we're looking at is another, this will be a thirty-year fix. So just like the first system lasted, maybe twenty-seven years before it started really having issues, we're looking at a thirty-year fix on this one also.
Yeah, how long is the guarantee for?
This is going to be guaranteed, the manufacturer's warranties, of course, two years out of the box. But I can find any other guarantees and bring that information back to you. I know that after five years, if you do not have a preventive maintenance contract built in or have a company come out, then then it, you know, we will not be able to proceed with any warranty after that. But let me just check on all the details of those various parts. We're looking at maybe four or five larger pieces of HVAC equipment, so each one is going to come along with its own type of warranty and specifications.
And would we eventually have the opportunity to buy longer warranties as time goes on?
In most cases, I would say yes. We have that opportunity to do it with roofs, and we have that opportunity to do it with a lot of other large ticket items.
Okay.
But that's the question that I can actually investigate and get back to you on.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay. It's good to hear this is moving forward.
Yes, it is.
All right, so this is an action item.
Mr. Chair, I move to enter into a contract with JRC Mechanical on the Carrollton Elementary HVAC project in the amount of five million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Doc.
All right.
Okay, that takes us to sixteen one, Tischler Bice. Are they ready?
Mr. Chair, as we transition, I want to be mindful of our student liaisons to give them the opportunity to go get homework done and get ready for tomorrow, if need be.
Stay if you want to. You're welcome.
Can you hear us okay, Mr. Bice?
I can. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir. How we doing tonight?
Good. How are you guys?
Good, sir. Okay, you want to tee it off, Doc?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Carson Bice from Tischler and Bice. And just wanted to go in a little detail concerning this, just to bring everyone back full circle. This Tischler Bice is a firm that has been providing Aloe White County with insights on fiscal impact, market analysis, and infrastructure planning. The county has relied on Tischler Bice for several years to support their data-driven decision-making. For the past five years or more, Aloe White County Schools has partnered with another organization to guide our data analysis for future growth as it relates to school growth. As a recommendation by the school board, we are trying to align our efforts with the county by utilizing Tischler and Bice, aiming to ensure consistency in data analysis across the county and schools, ultimately improving the accuracy and relevance of projections for school-related planning. Now, recently, Ms. Briggs and I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Carson Bice, and just talking to him a little, finding out exactly what his company can provide. And a couple of different bullet points that really stood out was they could provide a twenty-year projection plan for school needs, analysis of subdivision growth and its impact on enrollment, evaluation of potential locations for new schools based on growth trends, and additional insights and outcomes tailored to IWC's specific needs. And I apologize, that's what we're requesting from him. And based off of that information, we shared some information concerning where we stand at and what we need from him. And then that's when we are requesting that he has an opportunity, if he has an opportunity, to come out and speak to the board members tonight and to the public tonight about what Tischler and Bice can offer. Yes, sir?
Sir, I'll give you the floor, or we can start lobbing questions at you, but it might be best if you take the floor first. Unless the board objects? Over to you, sir.
Can you hear us, sir?
Yeah.
Mr. Bice, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, you have the floor.
Oh, I have the floor, okay. First of all, it's my pleasure to be with you guys tonight. I'd just like to expand on what Mr. Coleman said. Yeah, we do have a long history of working with the county on fiscal issues. And a lot of the fiscal analysis involves the same sort of demographic analysis that we can bring to this study. I'd also like to point out that we also do a lot of school infrastructure financing work around the country through impact fees and funding strategies. And as part and parcel of those types of studies, it's the same sort of demographic analysis that you guys have had done before, where first, we want to determine, you know, what are the student generation rates that are coming from different housing units? Sometimes, we can do that countywide. Sometimes, there are wide variations based on the geography of the counties that we work in, depending on whether there's sort of a suburban versus rural segment. So we would bring that to this analysis. We would also build upon what's been done in the past, which has been purely a demographic analysis of looking at where the students are coming from, what the student generation rates are. We would be building on this in two ways. One is, excuse me, we would come up with a better method for the district to track existing students through what's called a cohort survival model, where we age students through the system, count for birth rates for the county, as well as have a new growth factor into that, into the methodology, which I think will lend itself to greater accuracy in projection of overall student growth, not only the growth that's coming from new residents. The second component that we would be adding to what's happened in the past is basically a public facilities plan component, where we work with the county and school district staff to, one, develop siting criteria. And what I mean by that is, you know, how many, you know, what's the ideal acreage for elementary versus middle versus high school? Other criteria in terms of, you know, proximity to roads, bus routes, those types of things. But also map that geographically, based on where the new student growth is coming, we can provide a longer-term outlook to where Aloe White County Schools is likely to have capacity needs and will likely have to build additional capacity, either through expansions at existing schools or brand-new bricks-and-mortar schools over twenty years. And so we found that as a very useful tool, not only for long-range forecasting, but it also informs your shorter-term, five-year capital improvement plan.
Thank you, sir. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're getting a bunch of nods up here. You've answered a lot of questions without us having to throw them back at you, so that's a win. One of the topics, I guess, that's become near and dear to me is our school building, the physical design capacity for the students as compared to our program capacities. Are you able to get down to that level and figure out how we're utilizing the buildings? Grade level per school, programs per school?
Unfortunately, not to the level that you're probably talking about. I mean, one of the things that we do look at is, you know, what are the capacities of the buildings? And there are different ways to measure capacity, obviously, right? There's the physical capacity, there's the programmatic capacity, and there's a lot of different things that go into the programmatic capacity. Unfortunately, those types of analyses are primarily done by, you know, architect slash engineering firms that are more involved in the design and construction of schools. You know, we're more of a firm that's looking at, you know, the demographic characteristics of the county.
Got it. So if you were to provide us with growth studies, how do we... how do we define whether or not a building is at capacity? What values, are there predetermined values that are already in place?
Well, yeah, so, so in simple terms, you know, most, you know, you have these, you know, for lack of a better term, rated capacities, which is the fiscal capacity of buildings. And so we'll be looking at, you know, enrollment versus capacity by attendance area, and then projecting, okay, based on the amount of excess capacity you have now, how soon do you eat that capacity up or absorb that capacity? And then what areas of the county are you going to need to build additional elementary, middle, or high school capacity?
I guess my concern is if you, if you give us, I... We have data today that says X number of buildings may or may not be at capacity. But if you look at how we're utilizing those buildings, that number's different, sometimes, not always, and...
And Ms. Briggs might can...
So I guess the question is, how do we crack that nut?
Yeah, I mean, that's a difficult one. I mean, again, that's not our expertise. And, you know, also, things can change. So, for instance, you know, you may have a school that's rated, you know, 800 student capacity, but because of the programs you may have in that school, the programmatic capacity may be 600, right? But tomorrow, you could change the programs in that school, and it could be right back, the programmatic capacity could be up to, to 750, or it could be reduced to 350. You know, those things change over time, we have found with different schools. But again, that, that's, that's more of, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you utilize the space? And again, that's not our bailiwick.
So then I would, I guess I would end up turning it back to the superintendent and asking him how to, to figure out how to define how we're utilizing the spaces, and is it most optimal? I could come up with several examples, probably not, maybe not be a necessary conversation for now, but that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if I could, I would certainly think that that's something we have to do annually anyway, because that is a piece that can change annually, based on what programs are occurring in that building. So certainly, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to project that for 20 years out as it's going to change each year. But I think based on the data we would be getting from, you know, Mr. Bice's company, then we would continue with those updates annually, but we would have that solid foundation that he would be providing us on a 20-year timeframe to work with.
Seems fair.
I just put a mint in my mouth.
Well, I think, I think the fact that, it's obvious that Tischler-Bice is utilized and trusted by the county. It's, it's probably very wise for the schools to get on board and echo those efforts as much as possible. So this is probably a step in the right direction, and... I mean, anybody else? I don't want to steal all the comments. My question is, what's next? What do we do next?
What's next? Of course, this is just informational, so what's next is... Yeah, so what's... So what's next is, we're going to start to move forward and hit quotes from all the different vendors. Tischler-Bice being one of those individuals, and then we're going to actually get three or four, just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and for procurement processes, for procurement purposes. And then we'll bring back to the board, meet with Dr. Kramer, and go from there.
So we still need to go through the standard process?
We absolutely still need to go through the standard process.
Got it, okay, so...
I, I do have a question about that. Since we had Tischler-Bice here tonight giving us a brief, if we've got other companies that want to, they'll be invited to, to brief the board as well.
You are absolutely right, Mr. Colick.
Okay, thank you.
Will all of this information, will we find out what our best path is for expanding the current schools in any way? Do we have any options there versus building new schools, assuming that that's what, you know, we're seeing? Is that included in...
Yes, and I believe Mr. Bice may have mentioned that part of it would not just be new construction, but are there opportunities to expand existing construction based on what those needs are?
Exactly.
And unless I don't know something, neither one of us are, have backgrounds in planning. And so it really does require expert such as Mr. Bice and his company, or, you know, any company such as this that can come in and give us that guidance, looking 20 years down the road based on solid data.
Thanks.
Anybody else? So we, we've had, we, I mean, we've had joint sessions with the county. We've had numerous conversations up here about this very topic. If we're continuing to move forward to align, whether it be Tischler-Bice or some other organization as we continue to move forward, the more we can align our efforts. I mean, I wouldn't want to duplicate something for the schools that you folks are already doing for the county, or vice versa.
If I may, I think Mrs. Briggs stated it very well. As we move forward, smaller divisions such as ours, we usually do not have someone on board with that expertise. So we would be looking to experts such as Tischler-Bice to provide that level of expertise as we engage in a larger conversation with county officials.
Just read it verbatim. It's a question from the public, so we're just going to read it to you, sir. "What would you say about our current capacity and how shuffling of grades at each school line draw could be manipulated to maximize capacity? Could you recommend, given future growth rates of 2-plus percent a year, a new elementary school or other to handle load based off different projected neighborhoods that are getting approved?" So I guess, I guess in other words, can you look at zone boundaries and how we're directing different students to different school zones? Is that something you guys can analyze? Does that make sense, or did I just thoroughly confuse you?
I didn't, I didn't hear all of the question.
I guess the gist of it was, can Tischler-Bice look at different school zone boundaries? Where we're sending schools at throughout the county? And, and kind of compare that to projected housing projects that are forthcoming and approved?
Yeah, that's exactly, I mean, that's sort of the core of the analysis, is we're looking at... And one of the, you know, I think advantages we bring is we're already working with the county right now on a countywide fiscal analysis based on different growth scenarios. And so, you know, we, we're able to liaise with, with Amy Ring's folks in her, in the planning department. And it can, you know, have a good working relationship in terms of, you know, have the pipeline of developments that, that, that are, that have already been approved. And we would then map that geographically, project the students, overlay that with the attendance zones. And, and that's, that's basically the, the core of the analysis.
Good, okay. Anything else? All right, then I guess on that, we'll turn it over to staff to get with you and work up some, whatever the paperwork comes next, and we'll just go from there. Appreciate you coming out, sir.
My pleasure. Yeah, we look forward to the possibility of perhaps working with you guys. Thank you.
All right, everybody good? We need to take five?
I'm good.
Okay, 16.2, that's Virginia Preschool Initiative. Good to see you again, ma'am.
Yes. Good evening, Board Chair members, and Dr. Kramer and the community. My name is Haley Cooperiter, and I'm the Instructional Literacy Coordinator for Elementary and then Preschool as well. And I'm here to talk about the Virginia Preschool Initiative. Just want to make sure I, you all can't see what I, there we go, okay. All right, so the Virginia Preschool Initiative, or what I refer to as VPI, is our four-year-old preschool program that really addresses the whole child, especially with our Stream 'n' Three curriculum that you saw a little suite, so if you say this, from Carsville with the science. And it really just talks about the entire student, and it really hits their emotional and social, emotional needs, and how to regulate themselves, and then how to relate to their friends as well, at no cost to families. So there is a cost to us, of course, as the district, but not necessarily to the families. That's really important. A lot of families want to know, well, how much does it cost to send my child there? We are a full-day schedule, so we do operate from, in the regular school day, from 8:35 to 3, 4:55. So they come with all of the other kindergartners, first, second, third, fourth, and so on. They do, they are provided transportation, and breakfast and lunches also served. So they're basically like every other student that attends our elementary. The enrollment process is just a little bit different. The Virginia Preschool Initiative is also funded through a grant from the VDOE, and then we also have to have a local match for that funding as well. We have four, technically, we have five classrooms at our four elementary schools. Hardy Elementary currently has two classrooms. Carsville has one, Windsor has one, and Carrollton has one. A lot of our students are zoned for Hardy, and we have a highest, one of the highest populations there, so that's why we do have the two classrooms there. We do have one certified teacher and one full-day instructional assistant as well. There are no more than 18 students. We tried 21 times, and we won't do that again. That's a lot of four-year-olds running around. We do have, sometimes we have students with disabilities, or we have students that have special needs and such as EL, English learners. So because those students do require those services, those additional services can be provided by a special education teacher or an EL teacher as well. So we are really full-service and provide any kind of services that our kids would need in the district or in the program. This is probably the most nuanced part of VPI, and it can be most confusing sometimes for families. It's designed for children who have experienced or may be exposed to factors that could negatively impact their school success. We call it, we think of them kind of at-risk students, that they have had something happening that, you know, may not propel them in a, in a typical developing family environment or whatnot. I do say there, though, that families are encouraged to apply. I never want to turn a family down, but I just need them to know, like, hey, there are certain criteria that we have to follow, and it is based on student needs. So I've really tried to highlight, like, first, I'm, the first things I'm going to look for when a family applies is that they're either 200% below poverty, which is very dependent upon how many people you have in your family and the income that you make. So it's not, families are like, well, how much is that? I'm like, well, it depends on a lot of different factors. So they have to do submit their financial information in order to determine that as well. The child would be homeless, the family did not, or parents or guardians did not graduate from high school, or the student has special needs or a disability. So those are four, what we call VDOE criteria. And if a student, you know, meets any of those criteria, they're pretty much in the program as long as I have space for them. If there are additional spots, I can go to what's called local criteria. And I can, they're listed there. It's not a guarantee. So a lot of times, families will say, well, you know, my child is in a single-parent home. But then they also make more than the 200% poverty. So I'm always very clear with families and try to be as clear as kind to say, these are the things that I have to look at first, and then I can look at them if I still have spots. Windsor and, let's see, Windsor and Hardy, Windsor and Carrollton, they fill up with VDOE criteria the fastest and first. So I very, 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 very rarely have students that meet local criteria in order to fill those spots. There's just a greater need at those two schools. And then Hardy and Carsville can be, it just varies, and every year is different. Families are encouraged to apply. Right now, it's open. I actually already have about 38 applications, and it's only been open for about 13 days, so there's very much an interest for it. In the months of January through May, families submit their applications. They submit all of their required documents. I process them. And then part of the process is to interview families and just kind of verify. The VDOE has the very clear regulations about my, what I'm, my steps and what I'm supposed to do, so I do follow that. So those happen, those interviews happen during February through May. And then at June 1st, we let families know if they're eligible, ineligible, or on a waitlist for the program. This is our webpage here, so I'm gonna... I think, let's allow it, let's see what happens. This is our webpage. I try to be as informative for families as much as possible. And if they have any questions, I have my phone number and email there a lot. But it just kind of, is basically the same information that I just shared with you is here as well. And it also goes into kind of just the process, like, hey, you have to apply, then you're accepted into the program. Once you're accepted into the program, then you can actually register for the program. So it really is this process. And a lot of times, families will say, do I have to do this for kindergarten? And I'm like, no. Once you're in, you're in, you're good to go, so... And then this is the application process. And then this is also the submission list. These are all of the documents that I would need. And I try to make it as accessible for families as possible, and they are more than welcome to email me their documents. They can just take a picture, and as long as I can read it, I accept that as well, so that way it just helps them out. Think I'm going to go back here? Nope. I was trying. All right. What questions do you have for me?
So it's five classes?
Yes, sir.
Classrooms.
Mm-hmm.
And you have a maximum of 18 per class?
Yes, sir.
So, so you can, you can handle up to 90 students approximately?
Yes, sir.
And how many are in the program now?
I have 86 or 87. Carsville's my hardest school to fill, and I still believe I have three open spots at Carsville.
Okay, okay.
This is the first year that's happened. Usually, I'm able to fill them all.
Okay. And you have 30 applications, so what happens? All right, so you've got 83, you can handle up to 90, and you have 30 applications, so you got a little... So you got seven slots open, really?
Well, that was, so I have 37 already for the following school year.
Oh, okay.
So my, the application is open. So the application that I currently have, I don't have any more applicants actually for Carsville, so I can't, I am not enabled to fill those spots. But we also have, from October to December, you could do what's called a late enrollment. So if families do apply, then if I could fill those spots, I could still get funding for that. At this point, I can't get any more funding if I did fill those spots.
Okay. Sounds like you got a hand, a handle on it.
I try.
Yeah, yeah.
If a family, you have those open spots, would a family from a different area be able to provide their own transportation and get their child in that?
Yes, that is definitely one of my selling points, for Windsor families especially, to say, hey, you're, I have a spot open for you. Your child just needs to provide transport, you have to provide transportation to them. Sometimes transportation can help us, but not always. My goal is to fill the spots. I want kids in the program. It's a great program. We have amazing teachers. It's wonderful. So the more kids I can get, I definitely want to as much as possible.
Sometime between now and the next school year, you've got to interview 90 potential students' parents.
It's probably more like 150?
And you're doing all that on your own?
Yes.
That's a lot.
It goes pretty fast. I have a pretty good system.
Anybody else? Appreciate the information, ma'am.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
All right, Mr. Verrier, back up.
Hello again. The financial reports, there are just a couple comments that I have. On the general fund, you may have noticed that as of the end of December, it is reflecting that expenses are more than the revenue for the year-to-date. But I don't want that to alarm you. The treasurer had been, had been behind on making county transfers to us. However, that was corrected last week, so... So I wanted to also make sure that the audience knew if they were looking at the financial reports, to not be alarmed. The health insurance fund, it does continue to, to be a concern, but not as great. The claims are still about 42% ahead of what it was this time last year. However, the amount of money that we're contributing is up 25%. So right now, I'm projecting a deficit of about $450,000, and we have 1.3 million... And we have, um, one-point-three million in the health fund reserves. So we should be okay for the current year. Um, we will be addressing making increases in the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
So last month, that wasn't the case. You had some concerns about the health account.
Yes, but I hadn't taken the revenues into account, sir.
Good deal.
Ma'am, just for the public's sake, for those who are watching, the healthcare fund is one of the few areas that we can have a reserve. So I don't want people to think, why do we have a reserve? We don't in the operating budget, but in the healthcare budget, we do.
Yes. Since we are self-insured. Can I answer any questions for anyone?
I did notice that on the operations maintenance budget, there's only seven-hundred-and-nineteen thousand that were unexpended or unencumbered. Should we be concerned about how much? And I think this is a question for Dr. Coleman, because to be fair, we already talked about it, but he, uh, we've spent a lot of the money that's been budgeted for ops and maintenance.
But they have the funds encumbered.
Encumbered.
Um, which is the anticipated, um, expenses. Um, this was, we were at the same, um, basically at the same place at a percentage of budget this time last year as we are right now. Um, I'm not aware of any concerns?
It's no concerns at this time, as you would state, but I always want to point out, you never know what's gonna happen, uh, with boilers, chillers, and different things of that nature. You never know. And, uh, one chiller is three-hundred thousand dollars, so just you never know. But, uh, at this time, as, uh, Ms. DeVeri has stated, everything is pretty much encumbered and we're just rolling right along.
Okay, thank you. Are you prepared or to answer a few questions about the check register? Are you gonna cover that?
No, go right ahead.
Okay. Um, on the large-ticket items, could you, could you explain why VACO expenditures are listed in two different transactions?
Yes, sir. Um, they both, um, are for our workers' compensation insurance. Um, one of them is basically a, a true-up of, of what our true expenses were and, or our true salaries were in fiscal year twenty-four. So at the end of the fiscal year, they come in and do an audit. And then they, if they need to assess us an additional amount, that's what they did. So that was one of the amounts. The second amount is we actually pay the current year premium, um, over four payments. So this should be, that was the, the second payment, I guess, this year, second or third.
Okay.
So that's where they were two separate.
Got it. All right. So I've, I've got one question that I fully recognize it may not be very popular with some people, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Probably a question for Dr. Kramer more than anything else. So I believe it was in, early on in this fiscal year, we had a check register line item for H-2O to-go for somewhere in the ballpark of five thousand dollars. This year, we've got another couple of line items to tally up to, call it twenty-four hundred dollars. So my question is, what, how do we justify spending over seven thousand dollars just so far this year on bottled water?
Uh, first of all, the amount that you saw in, on the August check register was actually for last fiscal year.
Okay.
Um, it was behind on being paid. So that forty-five hundred, that was actually last year.
Okay.
Um, this bottled water is distributed to all of our facilities. And, um, so far this year, we've spent from July through October, it was twenty-six hundred, what you see on here now.
Okay. And that's what we have budgeted for the year? Do you know off the top of your head?
It's ten thousand, I believe.
Ten thousand dollars across the school's budget for bottled water?
Off, it's all facilities. So like, transportation is also included.
Yeah, and, um, and I think as Mr. DeVeri just stated, um, last year was seven thousand. So in the encumbered, the overall encumbered amount was ten thousand. But to get more into the details of why with the bottled water, um, this is something that has been ongoing for quite some time. For, um, one thing we use the water for, for parents coming in, for individuals, for staff, different things of that nature in the main offices or closer to the main offices to be used. Um, I did some research after you asked. This is something, uh, the initial contract was written in, uh, nineteen ninety-eight. So, uh, at one time, each school would actually pay for their own bottled water, depending upon what was going on in that particular school. Then maybe five or six years ago, that was consolidated under a central office expense. So now that's why you see a more, a larger bill, uh, than you probably did previously in previous years.
That's just bottled water?
That is just bottled water. It's, um, it's the H-two to-go, yes, sir.
So in nineteen ninety-eight, we signed a contract. Here we are in two thousand twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we walk around any given school and there's water spigots with water bottle filters on them. Can we take a good, hard look at whether or not we're actually spending money wisely? A ten thousand dollars is a lot of money for water.
I can understand. And just do keep in consideration, and we will take a look at that. But the bottle filler stations were installed over the, um, let's just say the COVID timeframe. We had, uh, fountain, water fountains there, but the bottle filler stations that we're referring to, that we use now with the filters and different things of that nature, that was installed over the COVID timeframe. Before then, um, I remember that it was only one bottle filler station, and that was located here at West Side and it happened through a grant. Um, but since COVID, now you have, as you stated, all over the division. But just wanna make sure we pinpointed that.
I gue, I guess my point is, and again, I recognize this may not be popular, because this has been in place for some time. But I've been working in the government since nineteen ninety-seven and never in any one of my stations have I ever had someone provide me an endless supply of bottled water. If I want water, I bring it to work or bring a bottle, go get it out of the spigot.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels about it. I just think ten thousand dollars is a lot of field trips. Sir, go ahead.
Uh, Dr. Coleman, um, I was a logistics officer in the Army for quite a few years. Um, do, at the end of the, uh, fiscal year, um, do we have a surplus of water? That's, that's what we can look at it. If, if, if we're spending ten thousand dollars, uh, how much extra water do we have at the end of the year? If, if we do have, uh, you know, quite a bit of extra water, then we can look at how much water do we really need?
Right. Uh, go ahead. Well, one way we can look at it is, uh, the overall budget for the water is, as, uh, Mr. Veri pointed out, is ten thousand. And as you can see, uh, last year and this year, it didn't reach that amount. So it's a fluctuation of how much is used. So we only pay for what we actually use. So that's why, um, there's gonna be a yearly fluctuation and a monthly fluctuation in that. So just hopefully that explains, um, there's no overage in that. It will always fall under the, uh, allotted amount.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we will certainly look into this, but I think Dr. Coleman teased out probably the origin of where this emanated. During the pandemic, we were required across the country, and I wasn't in this division, you could not use water fountains at that time.
Right, right.
So I, I would imagine that some of it relates back to that, but we'll certainly look into that and, and provide you with an update. Yes.
And Dr. Kramer, I just, uh, wanna make sure that we're not confused on it. This is not bottled water, as we're saying, um, in those bottles right there. This is more of the, uh, five-gallon, ten-gallon tub. But I just wanted the public to understand, it's not bottled water as in a twenty-ounce, sixteen-point-nine-ounce bottle. It's more of the ones that sit in the hallway or the main office and, um, it's a ten or fifteen.
So it's not just bottled water, it's bottled water in a cooler?
Yes, so it's not bottled water at all, not the sixteen-point-nine-ounce of bottled water. It is the big one, I believe it's fifteen gallons, ten gallons. I, I don't know how many gallons it is.
We're renting the coolers as well.
Yes.
I get you, I get you. And I, and I get it, everybody wants a nice cold glass of water. But when I send my kids to school, they've got directions to take a cup for water with the lid that didn't come off.
But I think to your larger point, we're purchasing the water.
Yeah.
Um, again, we can certainly look into that.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I didn't mean to open a can of worms, but...
Oh, yeah.
I did. All right. Anything else on financials? Have you done talking about water? All right, well, let's take five, please.
The Health Insurance Fund. It does continue to, to be a concern, but not as great. Um, the claims are still about forty-two percent, um, ahead of what it was this time last year. However, the amount of money that we're contributing is up twenty-five percent. So right now I'm, I'm projecting a deficit about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And we have, um, one-point-three million in the health fund reserves. So we should be okay for the current year. Um, we will be addressing making increases in the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
So last month, that wasn't the case. You had some concerns about the health account.
Yes, but I hadn't taken the revenues into account, sir.
Good deal.
Ma'am, just for the public's sake, for those who are watching, the healthcare fund is one of the few areas that we can have a reserve. So I don't want people to think, why do we have a reserve? We don't in the operating budget, but in the healthcare budget, we do.
Yes. Since we are self-insured. Can I answer any questions for anyone?
Any other questions on the financial reports?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, the next, um, item I'd like to, um, we have a, a updated budget calendar, which I believe was included, um... So here, uh, the main reason for updating this is because when the first calendar went out, I made the assumption that the February, I mean, January sixth would have been our first board meeting.
All right, we're back in session.
Any other questions on the financial reports?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, the next item I'd like to, we have a updated budget calendar, which I believe was included. So here, the main reason for updating this is because when the first calendar went out, I made the assumption that the February, I mean, January 6th would have been our first board meeting, because that's what it previously was. So that's why I changed it, and that's why now you see January 16th as the first item. And even though it says this is where we'd like you to provide budget input, I know you provide that input all through all the work sessions and at any time, so that was just a placeholder. I have three items highlighted. The February 20th is what we're proposing to have a special meeting for the superintendent to recommend the budget for fiscal year '26. Then I've also just, these are alternative dates. Then the following week, we would have a work session. Then on March 6th, we would hold the public hearing. We once again could have another work session on March 13th. And then on March 20th would be another special meeting for you to approve the budget so we can provide it to the county administrator on or before March 31st, as required by the Code of Virginia.
When's our next regular meeting? Calendar's out of date up here. It's the 13th of February?
It's the 13th.
Yes, thank you.
So we're going to get our first official look on the 20th, the following week.
Yes.
I think it's important to note, we will be working with you as we've done in previous years, one-on-one, two-two-ones. So we'll be having conversations before these meetings, between these meetings. So this is a proposed budget development calendar, but can certainly be adjusted as need be, as it has been again in the past.
Dr. Kramer, I'd love to have a meeting with you, with Ms. Perkins, myself, and you and your staff to go over some of this, you know, as the finance committee as well, before we really dive into it as a board, so that we can at least make some recommendations to the board on various aspects of it.
Absolutely. In fact, Ms. Devery and I met, I think, as late as yesterday and had that conversation that we look forward to engaging all members of the board, and certainly the finance committee members, prior to the official meeting dates that are posted here.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing to approve, just wanted to give you an update.
Sounds good. Looking forward to it. It's going to get busy. Dr. Coleman, welcome back, sir.
Mr. Chair, School Board Members, Operation Update. All right. This is the only update for this month. It'll be the school administration office transition. As you know, the recent renovation of the central office building was completed, and it was under budget, so to speak. Due to strategic and cost-efficient approach by utilizing the expertise of our in-house certified plumber and the master electrician, we avoided high cost of external contractors in these critical areas. Additionally, we partnered with five local Class A contractors, assuring their support in the local economy. Now, our contracted maintenance and custodial company, ABM, completed approximately 45% of all of the work. And that's important to emphasize, based off, once again, the electrician, the carpenter, and the plumber. Even with these overtime expenses, these approved significantly more cost-efficient than hiring temporary workers. We weighed the cost of hiring outside labor and hiring our individuals over the weekends and different things of that nature after work, and it was significantly lower. And now, at this time, we are waiting the final certificate of occupancy before moving, well, we move into the building, but before we can close the doors on our old building and move into the new one. And Mr. John Smith, our facilities coordinator, is actively aligning this final inspection with Mr. Drumheller as we speak. So the meeting could be held sometime early next week to get the final occupancy, or the final inspection, so we can have the certificate of occupancy, and then officially 100% fully move in. I think that several board members have already visited and came through for meetings, and you can see everything is coming together. But the hub of central office is not there, because human resources is not located in the building at this time. So once again, just like the slide says, the transition is in progress. One thing I wanted to point out, once again, what did this do for us? What did this do for the county? 2,000-square-foot climate control warehouse, a return of 3.5 classroom to Smithfield High School, professional development space, secured file storage for the first time, centralized division administration, division staff training room, confidential meeting room. Also created office space for four staff from the Spade Department currently in school buildings, pulling them in back to central office also. So division of the central office building, that's what actually created for the division to ensure that we're getting, as Mr. Colicca said, the most bang-for-all buck on a regular basis. Are there any questions concerning the transition at this time?
Dr. Coleman, it's not so much of a question.
Okay.
But I just think you need to give yourself a pat on the back as well for all of this, as far as the overall cost for the renovation, since that had no impact on the county whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Rooster. That's one thing I did leave out. I know I mentioned it a couple of times, but yes. Through this move in, through the transition, well, no local funds spent on this project. So just reiterating that, there was no local funds spent on the project. Now, everything else in the building, we will be moving forward. It would be just like any other facility in this division. When there's touch-ups needed, when there's accidents needed, when there are things broke, we will put forth the maintenance and to correct those deficiencies. So just FYI.
Do you have a projected timeframe of being completely moved into the new central office?
Of course, certificate of occupancy willing, but human resources, we're looking at mid-February to move human resources in. We're waiting on a couple of more different things, secure file cabinets, different things of that nature, that human resources will definitely need before they actually make their transition. So certificate of occupancy is number one concern, though, at this time.
You have any head hurters? Are you happy?
At this time, you know, the time that it takes to order different things as the file cabinets and different things of that nature, that's going to, you know, we're waiting on someone else to make the transition that we need. But other than that, I mean, it's been going very smooth. I'm pretty sure that most individuals would say the same thing.
And I think it's important to note, Mrs. Sullivan is engaged in conversation there, but I'm sure some people are wondering, you currently have file cabinets. Some of our equipment is so old, it's not going to travel well. Some of our furniture isn't traveling well, so we are going to have to purchase new file cabinets and some new furniture, because the furniture is so old and obsolete. By the time we put it in a truck, it's not going to make it. So that's one of the challenges that Mrs. Sullivan is having, and that's delaying her move. So just wanted to state that for you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Just to kind of make the point that you folks really have done a lot to kind of be very frugal.
Right.
I think it's worth pointing out that when I toured it, I couldn't help but notice these way cool 1970s-themed office furniture that are floating around the new CO. Where'd you get those from?
There was a donation from RRMM. I think we'll have it on the donation checklist. There was some chairs that Dr. Kramer has in his office. I have in mine. And Ms. Devery have them temporarily in her office, but I think that she'll be donating those chairs to me and Dr. Kramer.
But I'm glad you brought that up. So absolutely, we're being very frugal, very fiscally responsible. We have old furniture. We're purchasing some used furniture, donated furniture, and it's old and used and donated furniture pieces are in my office. But also, you didn't note this, sir, we're using the doors from the old building and moving those doors over to our new building as well. So we're cutting costs across the board as much as we possibly can.
Yes.
Even in taking the whole door frames off and transporting those over to cut costs. So thank you for noticing that.
I think by far and large, you guys have done an outstanding job of trying to hold those dollars tight and use them as far as you could. So good on you. Anybody else? All right.
Thanks, sir.
All right, that is it.
Mr. Brinkley?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Kramer. Wanted to touch on tonight, just give you an update on where we stand with our weapons detection system as we've rolled it out at Windsor High School. As listed here, the systems are performing as expected. And we've, this has been a long trial of trial and error and testing different things, and really trying to work back and forth and find just the right settings where we're catching everything that we want to catch, but we're not holding up students unnecessarily. And as I've listed here, the times have significantly decreased since we rolled this system out in October. When we first rolled it out, our times were averaging roughly 25 minutes at the bus entrance and approximately 35 minutes at the front entrance for the student drivers and parent drop-off. Right now, we're running those times, and we're at about, actually, we're under five minutes for the bus loop doors, and we're right at 15 minutes for the front doors. The amount of students coming through each door are pretty comparable. There's a few more coming through the front doors. But the difference is, in the times, is the students coming in the front doors are staggered. Obviously, as they get there, they're coming through the doors. So it's taking a little bit longer at the front doors. I did get the chance to speak to Connor tonight to verify this and run this by him, but the students are really adjusting to, and they're accepting the detection systems now. In speaking to him, he said it's just routine for them now. At the very beginning, we had a lot of grumbling, as expected, not only from the students, but some of the staff. But one of the things that has really stood out to have these students accept this is the staff at Windsor High School, and I can't say enough for them. Ms. Carroll and her team have really stepped up. Ms. Hodgkiss, Ms. Basking. We even had our new SSO that actually started the week before we rolled this system out, so he kind of got thrown right into the mix. But even, I mean, even down to Ms. Brandon out front playing music and welcoming the students, that really went a long ways to helping boost that morale as we got through this system at Windsor. Just them having a smile on their face, being encouraging as the students were getting there. They've just, they've been absolutely outstanding. We do still have some obstacles remaining at Windsor. One of the issues that we're really facing right now is we don't have a solid plan for inclement weather. You've been to Windsor High School. You know that there's no kind of awning out front or at the bus loop entrance. So at the times that we have the inclement weather, we're opting to suspend the weapons detection, because obviously, we don't want to hold the students up and have them standing out in the rain or the cold. So we're having to kind of adjust there for the inclement weather. So that is going to be a need moving forward, is some type of covering, some type of awning. And that doesn't just go for the weapons detection system. That's something that would be very beneficial to the school as a whole. Some of the other obstacles with Windsor is manning the detection system during the day. We do have the SSO on staff, but with the size of Windsor High School and the amount of, I hate to say expendable staff, but having staff members that can be there to man that throughout the day. All of their staff have assignments throughout the day. So we just don't have that additional staff to man that throughout the day, and we're doing the best that we can with it. But those are still some of the obstacles that are still standing at Windsor High School. We're looking at rolling this out, obviously, at Smithfield High School. Again, kudos to Windsor High School and all of the staff there, because we learned a lot from this. Like I said, trial and error, what works, what doesn't work. And the staff was just so accommodating and so helpful at getting through that. And we were able to learn a lot of lessons. So as we move forward into rolling this out at Smithfield High School, we have some of those bugs worked out ahead of time. So the information and guidance will be pushed out to parents and students ahead of the rollout. I've spoke with Ms. Cuffey, and we're going to do some staff training on the afternoon of January 28th, which is some of our professional development days, workdays. We're going to do some additional training with her staff. And then we're looking at the first day of weapon screening being planned for February 18th, which is the day we come back after President's Day. So that is what we're looking at for our first day of screening. Obviously, we may have the detectors set up prior to that, and just going through with the students on what to do, what items they can come through with and what items they can't. And again, these are all lessons that we learned through Windsor High School of, you know, what needs to come out of the bags, what doesn't. We've had signs made. Lynn had sandwich board signs made for both schools now. So we have those sitting out front, explaining to the students what they need to take out. I will say that you can expect some delays as we roll this out at Smithfield High School, just like we did at Windsor High School. There's going to be some morning delays expected probably during the first three to four weeks, until the students get used to exactly how to roll through the systems. The one plus that we have at Smithfield High School versus Windsor is the amount of room that we have to work with. At Windsor High School, especially at the front doors, we have a very confined space. We don't have a lot of room, a lot of space to work with. So that's not an issue that we'll run into rolling this out at Smithfield High School. So that is something that we are looking forward to, being able to have that room to set all of this up. Do y'all have any questions?
Mr. Brinkley? All right, so we're looking at, we're kind of short on staff to work the detection systems, right? Have we looked at possibly volunteers, community volunteers? I think in elementary school here at Windsor, I think we, I was something called a dog?
What?
Yeah, daz of great students, something like that. I mean, we would have to come up with some type of screening program, but, you know, at least look at it and possibly, or, you know, and that'd be Dr. Kramer, look at something like that, because I'm sure it's grandparents out there. It doesn't have to be guys, it can be ladies also. And of course, screen them, and then see what they can, if they can help. I mean, the community, they love to help their grandkids and everything.
And one of the, you know, at morning arrival, like at Windsor, Ms. Carroll has reallocated her staff and re-appropriated them and moved them into different positions. She's done a phenomenal job of that. So at arrival, we have the staffing to do it. It's throughout the day is having someone dedicated to that system. And it is a possibility that maybe we could work out some kind of schedule. Definitely something that we could look into. But at the morning arrival, we're maintaining, and we're not having any issues. It's having somebody dedicated to that system throughout the day for your visitors, for your late arrivals, students coming in. And we do hold the SSO and one of the staff members at Windsor there later to handle some of those late arrivals right now. But the students coming in throughout the day and other times, there may or may not be somebody available at the time that student's coming in to be there to handle the screening.
Have we looked at, now, I know Alawite doesn't have auxiliary deputies yet, but the sheriff was talking about starting that program. If he does start the program, we could possibly utilize retired deputies, volunteer deputies. I mean, they wouldn't be getting paid.
The only issue, the only issue we run into there is if they are a sworn law enforcement officer, with having them conduct any type of searches on the school grounds, we run into issues there. It actually has to be a member of our school staff performing that. Now, they could be there and be available, just as the SROs are, if something is found, or if a situation arises. But as far as them conducting screenings or doing searches, we wouldn't be able to utilize them for that.
And I think, if I may, Mr. Chair? And I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think that's the challenge, Mr. Cunningham. We will be having a larger conversation during budget season about what those needs are, given that we've visited other school divisions in the area who have weapons detection systems and how they employ, deploy, I should say, their staff members. So, we will be having those conversations about what we think we need moving forward. So, yeah, absolutely, all recommendations are welcomed and everything is going to be considered, but I think Mr. Brinkley stated it, we have to be very careful in terms of who is working with our students and volunteers opposed to a staff member who is employed by the school division. There's some things that we have to be careful for legally.
Possible liabilities.
Liability issues, absolutely, that's right.
Understand, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, appreciate you. Mrs. Briggs, school calendar.
This is short and sweet, and that's not an inaccurate attachment, that's correct. We just put the current calendar up there to let you know that our plan is to do something very similar for 25-26 that we already have in place for 24-25. The reason you don't have 25-26 draft yet is it's still being developed. We will do a survey of employees, students, staff, citizens to get their feedback on the draft, and then at the February meeting, we're going to present you with a draft version based on that feedback. We'll let you know what the feedback was, what we heard. So, and then in March, the hope is that we'll bring it back again. If you recommend any adjustments, we can make adjustments. When it comes back in March, you'll officially approve the calendar for 25-26. So, if you have any questions about what we are considering for next year, I'll do my best to answer that tonight or offline, but you certainly will be seeing the draft and have a chance to comment in the survey as well as comment at the February meeting.
And if I may, I will be enlisting input from all of the advisories, our student advisory, our staff advisory, and our parent advisory in terms of the calendar, and I'll certainly share that input with you, the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. As to you, Dr. Kramer.
Very good, thank you, sir. And we will start with superintendent's update. Let's go ahead, next slide, I think that is the Isle Achievers, very good, Isle Achievers, the Isle Award recipients. And an apology from me due to a family emergency, unfortunately, I missed these presentations. So, congratulations, and again, I apologize for not being there. The recipient for the Inspire Award was Ms. Christie Burrell, bus driver top left. The recipients, plural, for the Succeed Award were Ms. Tawana Ford and Ms. Susan Page, top right. The recipients for the Lead Isle Award were Ms. Connie Chapman and the Smithfield Isle of Wight Tourism Office, bottom left. And the recipient for the Empower Award was Mr. Greg Brown. So, round of applause to all of our Isle Award recipients. Again, congratulations to our very deserving December Isle Award recipients. And next, unfortunately, I missed this as well, look at those beautiful faces there, students and staff. The annual candy cane delivery occurred on December 18, 2024, and we see the beautiful smiles of our students as our staff provided the candy cane treats. This event is a time-honored tradition. It is always good to see the excitement and smiles of our students as they are provided with these treats, and everyone is in costume. It's difficult to recognize some of our central office folk here. Ms. Briggs is a reindeer, and the Grinch, who's the Grinch? Is that Jason Brinkley again, right? Scaring children in addition to ensuring their security. Our very own bottom left, second from the, second to the right there, I don't know if you noticed who that is, wonderful school board clerk, and who are you? Cindy Lou Who, right, also scaring the children. So, anyway, great event, we do this every year. Our students look forward to it, our staff in our buildings look forward to it, so, yes. Next, we have our Education Foundation Grants Fund. The Education Foundation for Isle of Wight County Public Schools began surprising teachers on Wednesday, January 15th by announcing the approval of funding for their teacher grant request. So far, 11 grants have been fulfilled across Carisville Elementary, Windsor High, Carrollton Elementary, and Westside Elementary, and on Friday, four more will be announced at Smithfield Middle and Smithfield High for a total of 15 grants amounting to $17,000. So, congratulations to all of our schools who applied for and received funding, and we extend a huge thank you to our Education Foundation members and the organization for their enormous support and their generous funding. So, I think a round of applause is in order for the Education Foundation as well. Thank you for all that you do. And just yesterday, actually, as some of you are aware, we announced the 2025 Teacher of the Year for Isle of Wight County Schools, Ms. Deanna Hubbell, Dina Hubbell, pardon, from Carisville Elementary. And as you see from the photos, staff and I had the pleasure of surprising Ms. Hubbell and her class with flowers and the announcements, and interestingly, she was here today, and a few of her awesome students were here as well with her as they presented. Congratulations again, and we're so proud of you, Ms. Hubbell. You're most deserving of this award, and we know that you will represent Isle of Wight admirably as our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations and a round of applause to Ms. Hubbell. And last, our Teacher Quality Partnership, the $9 million grant that we share with some other school divisions. Isle of Wight County hosted the Teacher Quality Partnership Grant Meeting on Wednesday of this week, just yesterday as well, and as you will recall, the TQP $9 million grant is a collaboration between Isle of Wight Suffolk and Portsmouth Public Schools, and it was actually one of our first meetings in our new administration building, and maybe, I think it was actually our very first meeting that we hosted an event with others. So, we're very pleased to do that, and you see our beautiful new conference space there that will be used throughout our division, and certainly, we can host some of our special call meetings there even for our Board. So, that was in that beautiful space that has been recently renovated. And with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my superintendent update.
Thanks, Doc. Any comments from the Board? All righty, takes us to an action item, 18.1 Personnel Report.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel report as presented, a copy of which can be obtained from the school board clerk.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. Takes us to 18.2, another action item, a closed session item. Mr. Wooster, we'll have to, may I have to muddle through an appropriate motion here? Maybe something like, move to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the additional FTE for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. Moving right along, 19.1 is the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as attached and presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and if my fellow Board members would endure me for a second while I read the donation menu, I think we need to do a better job of recognizing the many donors we get. Women's Club of Smithfield donated $50 gift card to the ABCD Employee Recognition Program. Carol Aston donated $250 to the Reading Program at Carrollton Elementary. AARP Windsor Chapter donated $25 for an after-school program in memory of Mr. David James. And Dr. Dana Stallings, Southside Diabetes and Integrated Care, donated $1,000 for the Concert and Marching Band at Georgie Tyler Middle School. And then, last but not least, was Windsor Elementary received Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. I'm going to butcher this, I don't know if it's Phi Chi Omega? I'm weighing it. Chapter Coats, Cold Weather Accessories and Undergarments for Students. And then, Connie Dennis Booker donated books in memory of Dr. Carolyn Boone. Thank you to all the donors contribute to Isle of Wight County Schools. Any other comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. And that moves us down to item 20.1, is a public discussion regarding a medical director, and I do believe Mr. Colick and Mr. Wooster would like to make some comments about this idea.
As these gentlemen are doing that, may I ask Dr. Coleman to come to the microphone?
Over to you, gentlemen, you got the floor.
Okay, so, the medical director position is something we have kind of tossed back and forth over the past year, I believe. Excuse me, medical director position that would pretty much cover Isle of Wight County schools. I did speak to a physician who was willing to take this position on if we decided we wanted to go ahead and go with it. I've done some more research on it, and there are multiple levels in which the medical director can act. When I spoke with him before, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, if we move forward on this, then we need to have a meeting with the person in question and let that person explain what their capacity would be, what they're willing to provide. But the multiple levels, when you've got a medical director, it could be the potential of reviewing policies and procedures for medical services. It's not going to be writing those policies, it's just going to be in a consultation capacity. If you need a policy reviewed, submit it, they review it, good policy, bad policy, situation like that. Another role, which could be a possible function, would be to ensure that the school's medical care complies with regulations such as FDA audits and inspections. And again, these are just options, I'm not saying that's what would go along with it. They also set performance standards, monitor outcomes, and address any issues. Participating in the development and delivery of educational programs, and that would be educational programs given within the school, within the nursing department. I'm just going to go out on a limb and throw something out there, let's say, we'll use something like CPR, CPR Training Program. Once, you know, it's established, you could run it through the medical director, and yes, it's a great program, something that simple. Or it could be further into it as far as advanced medical care in the event of an emergency. So, it could be any of those, and it's going to, it's all going to depend on the individual willing to take on that position. I think overall, it would benefit the schools in a great capacity because you have a physician in a consultation role, kind of giving you a person to lean on. And the person that I did speak with, I've known this person for years, he's got a long background in emergency medicine, still works in the capacity as an emergency room physician, and he is also the Operational Medical Director for Isle of Wight County Fire and EMS, which would also be a benefit when it came to ambulance pickups of students or staff from school, where you can do a smooth transition from the school to EMS, give a smooth turnover, and expedite patient care. And that pretty much sums everything up in a nutshell here.
So, over the last few months, I've been learning more and more about this, and I agree with everything Mr. Wooster just said, and I think the medical director would also establish protocols the same way he does for EMS, correct, for nurses and such within the schools.
Before I would actually speak on that with an accurate answer, I would like to go back and speak with him first.
Okay, that's fair enough. But I've talked to several paramedics who have been to our schools. One in particular had an issue, I can't really go into great detail on it because of privacy concerns, but this paramedic told me he was scared he wasn't going to make it to the hospital with one of our students a couple of years back. But had the nurse been able to help the child in the same way a paramedic could, and she's more advanced in education than him, he probably wouldn't have been as anxious to get to the hospital. And he recommended, you know, that we look into this shortly, well, actually, quite a while after Mr. Wooster, you know, started talking about it, and so, we had some good conversations. What I would like to see is the medical director, see if we can piggyback with the county on their medical director, and the reason for that is exactly what Mr. Wooster just said, there'd be a smooth transition if we were to ever, if a nurse of ours was ever able to treat a child that needed to go to the emergency room for an ambulance, there would be a nice smooth transition, they'd have the same protocols they're working on, et cetera, et cetera. And if anything happened that the medical director decided to retire, we have professionals in the medical service who are identifying who the next medical director would be. So, I think this is something that we should pursue, I'm not saying it's something we need to vote on, but Dr. Kramer, I would ask that you, Dr. Coleman or one of your staff, consult with Mr. Drewery on, you know, in the county, he's a, has a lot to do with the medical services in the county, and explore what options may be available to us, and also meet with the current medical director, you know, to get his views on this. This may go nowhere, we may find out we're going to start a trend for schools in the state, I don't know, but I think it's a conversation that we need to have to make sure that our students, if they ever get into a life-threatening situation, they've got the medical support right then and there as they need it. Because, you know, I have seen an ambulance take a half hour to get to an emergency situation because the local ambulance in that neighborhood was already on a run, okay? I've seen several times the ambulance going from Smithfield to Windsor, takes a half hour to get up there and sometimes, you know, for an emergency. I would rather see us have the ability in the schools with a registered nurse or one of our EMTs or paramedics that we have working for us to be able to help while they're waiting for that emergency services, okay? Thank you.
You and I had a conversation about this on the phone a few days back, and at first, I didn't know what you were talking about, it was going over my head. Could you explain, kind of go through the conversation we had the other day? How are we deficient, why do you think we need this? What are our deficiencies now? Because I know that we have a head nurse, and we have nurses in each school, so what can they and can they not do, and why do we need a director position?
Do you want to answer that, Mark? Yeah, Mark, Mr. Wooster is a lot more experienced in this than I am, I'm... Yeah, Mark, Mr. Wooster is a lot more experienced in this than I am. I'm, you know, still a student of this for another couple of days.
All right. Before, before I go into answering your question, I just, I want to clarify something based on what you were discussing. Dealing with terminology, the medical director, okay, for what I'm looking at for the schools, and a medical director for emergency medical services, two different, two different entities. Two different entities. Even though it could very well be the same person, the roles are completely different. And then you could, if it was the same person, it would be up to that medical director or physician whether he wanted to incorporate part of the emergency medical services in this, within the schools if you have EMTs and paramedics working for the school. And then if they did it that way, then that EMT or paramedic could potentially operate to their full level of training, which in some cases, in that aspect, they would be able to provide a higher level of care than the nursing staff. But those are just all variables. Now, to get to your question, what I'm looking at is having a medical, medical director to basically provide oversight, consultation, dealing with medical care, medical responses, policies, procedures. And like I said, he's not gonna have an active role. He or she would not have an active role creating these policies. This is a person you could bounce things off of.
So, so when you say medical director, you're referring to a M.D., a licensed?
Yes, a physician.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Yes. So, and it, it could be an M.D., it could be a D.O., it could be anything of that nature, physician. Looking at, you know, students that are on different plans, okay, which may need medication. Again, you can have a medical director which would be not overseeing it, but in an advisory capacity where that physician could potentially say, all right, this is a much better way of doing things, and it would also be a CYA to cover the nurses. Because we all know how many, how many parents, you know, you've got a, you've got a child that may be on medication. And I don't blame parents for being concerned that their child is receiving their medication appropriately. And I would have been the same way. So that would be another CYA thing in that aspect. Biggest thing would be policies, responses, and I would love to see EMTs, paramedics, ALS providers, however you want to look at it, that work within the schools. I would love to see them be able to operate to their level of training. That would be a huge benefit to everybody involved.
I don't mean to sound ignorant, because I just don't know what I don't know. When you say operate to the level of training, so you're telling me that today our nurses cannot do everything they're trained to do?
No. No, I'm not referring to the nurses in that aspect. I'm referring to EMTs and paramedics, EMS providers that work within the school system. Unless they are operating under an OMD, they cannot, like me, for example, okay? When I'm at work, I operate under an operational medical director. I can run a complete cardiac arrest from beginning to end, from defibrillations to medications, inhibitions, you name it. I don't need to consult anybody. Could I do that here? Absolutely not, because I'm not covered under an operational medical director.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense. So what do you guys want to do? What's next?
If this is something that we would like to move forward with, then I would like to go back and speak to the person I originally spoke with and get him to speak to the board and staff as well. Now, he did tell me before, he's got a very busy schedule, and he prefers a Zoom meeting. So, but that's up to everybody else, whatever, you know, the board wants to do here.
What say you, Doc?
Yes. So you mentioned Mr. Drewery. You, I know that you've had a conversation with Nurse Abby and Dr. Coleman, and Dr. Coleman and I, and I had a very brief meeting with Nurse Abby. I think we would need to have a larger conversation with the medical community. Dr. Coleman and I meet with all of the medical management officials in the county. I think having that conversation with them about how we support our schools. Certainly, we don't have a position budgeted for. Do we have that discussion during the budgetary process? Making certain that we're following all of our processes as it pertains to employing said person. So I think there are lots of conversations we need to have as we explore this option. I lack that expertise. I don't think Dr. Coleman and Mrs. Sullivan have that expertise. So I, I think we would need to have a larger conversation with individuals who are tasked with those responsibilities. Will Drewery in the county, Nurse Abby for our school division. So if that is something you'd like to do, certainly, I'm not sure when our next meeting is for that body, Dr. Coleman.
If you're speaking of the Division Crisis Team or just the meeting with the nurses?
No, the, the Crisis Team, because he, may he mention Mr. Drewery?
Gotcha. I would have to get back to you with that date. I think it's in early March.
If, if I may, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Colick, inviting you to be a part of that conversation?
Absolutely.
And Nurse Abby is a part of that, that body as well. And then again, if this is something you'd like to explore, we need to look at the budgetary implications because that's going to be a cost as well. And ensuring that we're following all of our human resources processes as we discuss employing a personnel. Certainly, if that is the case, it can't be an individual we select here. It has to be, the person has to go through the process that we have established as a school division.
And I think that's all we're asking, if we can get the conversation started, see if it's something that we should and we can, you know, implement within our schools.
Ms. Sullivan, did you want to share anything more?
I'm, I'm good. I guess I do just want to clarify that our nurses are completely qualified to administer medication within our schools. That was a comment that was made, so I just want to make sure that we're clear about that, that that is part of their role and responsibility, and they are licensed to do that. The plans that our students have for medical, that is certified by a doctor, we have healthcare plans for them. The policies that we have are informed by our current nursing coordinator and supervisor. I just want to make sure that some of the things that were stated, that were clear about.
The one example I used was an emergency situation where a paramedic who was on scene, you know, advised me that they had to wait till he got there with the appropriate medications.
And so you're saying like someone who didn't have medication of their own?
Yeah.
And we do also have emergency response medications like EpiPens and Buterol as well.
There's just one more thing, Dr. Kramer. Just, just bear in mind, when you're talking about, you know, the county and the local fire departments and EMS units, that operational medical director, I know I'm repeating myself, but that OMD and what I'm talking about are two separate entities. The OMD for the county EMS would have no authority within the schools unless it was one and the same person. Does that make sense?
I lack the depth and knowledge in the area of medicine to respond to that. I have a doctorate in education, not medicine.
Okay, ju- just bear in mind, they are two separate entities. And the OMD for, we'll say, Olive White County Fire and Emergency Services has no authority within the school. So, just like if you had a medical director within the school, that physician would have no authority outside of the school unless it was one and the same person. Just so I'm clear on that.
They're basically two separate roles that can be held by two separate people, or one person can hold both roles.
Okay, so I'm picking up a couple of different jobs or a few different, two different new jobs, maybe one, but it's really two. We're thinking about creating a position for a medical director. He or she can be an M.D. or not. But if they are, we prefer to have an M.D., so that would take care of two physicians, but one person would hold it. I got that. But I'm also hearing putting EMTs or EMS, and how many schools? Are we talking?
No, we've just got, I think, one or two EMTs in the school somewhere.
So, so, well, okay, so.
They are not positions that we currently have, Mike, and we're not looking to add those.
So that would just be?
That's an example.
So, okay, so, no, but my question on that, so are we gonna, which schools are we gonna pick to put? Are we gonna have an EMT in certain schools? Because, all right, so we need, all right, Carsfield's so far out there, so are we saying we need one there? Because it would take so long for?
No, all we're doing is asking Dr. Kramer to start the conversation, you know, to see if we could use a medical director. It would be beneficial to us, and if so, you know, who we should use. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less.
Okay, I'm good with that, but I heard a conversation about how long would it take an ambulance to get to certain schools?
There were examples.
Oh, there was, okay, so we're not?
That was supporting information.
Okay, okay, all right, well, I'm good. I'm just trying to find out how many different positions we're trying to come up with, but I'm good. Thank you.
Maybe one.
One position.
One.
That's it. I was using, there, there are EMTs that work for the, for Olive White County Schools. And I would love to see them operate to their full capacity and not be restrained. However, with that being said, I would also like to see in each school an emergency response team consisting of an EMT, possibly a paramedic. And they would have a stretcher per se with the necessary equipment, and they would respond to medical emergencies anywhere on that campus. But obviously, that would include more people, more funding, more equipment, and that would be a conversation at a later date. But I think that would be an excellent thing to have in each school.
We actually do have clinic teams at each one of the schools. They have defined roles. It's crisis response. It goes through the crisis plan of what individuals do. They're trained by the school nurse and by the nursing coordinator in order to be prepared for responses. One of the things that was mentioned was about like coordinating with EMS. There's actually specific guidelines for each one of the schools. Mr. Brinkley can probably speak to that better than me at this point. But, you know, there are specific guidelines about like which door EMS is supposed to report to. Who's going to be the person waiting for EMS outside to make sure that the transfer is well-done? There's always a school employee that rides along to make sure that the child has a local apprentice with them at all times in that transfer. So some of those things are already handled at the school and in coordination with EMS. Instead of being a separate entity, we've worked with them in a partnership since we already have that as a community service in our county.
What level of care are we talking when you're, when you've got a responding team like that?
Well, our school nurse is probably the, or is the most licensed individual within our school community. Like you spoke to, we do have several employees on staff that are employed by us in a different role, but happen to be EMTs. They're in roles from everything from classroom teachers, clinic assistants, to school counseling, registrars. They have EMT licenses, and so they do assist with their knowledge. But our school nurse, as the licensed individual who's employed by us in that role, is leading that team and making the call. And then, of course, once we've initiated the response of EMS, they operate within their roles of EMTs when they arrive to the school.
So who's covering the, the nursing station when the, when the nurse goes out for something like this?
So the clinic team, so that might comprise of the school principal, the assistant principal. They're typically, the front office staff is also trained like in medication administration, in emergency first aid, giving EpiPens, providing a Buterol. So you have at least five staff members per building. Diabetic response, how to provide insulin. Our teams are trained in that so that they can provide that medical emergency services in the absence of a nurse. Or also, if they're handling a more severe situation, we have staff members who are trained to provide that.
Okay, thank you.
So for the preservation of time, can we agree that we're gonna set up a date for future time? And you guys are gonna talk about options and cans and can'ts, and so on and so forth?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's right. Dr. Coleman and I will see when that next meeting is available with county officials, including our nurse supervisor, Abby. And we'll certainly coordinate that with Vice Chair Wooster and Board Member Colick.
Okay, so we'll, good deal. Moving forward. Thanks, gentlemen. Seems we're certainly, certainly worthy of a discussion. 20.2, Changes to Bylaws for Discussion, another information discussion. Mr. Wooster?
And as we prepare to have that conversation, may I ask Deputy Getz and Mrs. Briggs to come to the microphone just to assist with responding to questions if there are any?
All right. I know we've had previous conversations on this. It has been mentioned in the past. And one of the things that I'm proposing, and I will, I'll give you the reasoning why, which we've already talked about it. But looking at the meeting schedules with the ION Instruction and Olive White Achievers, my goal would be to provide a separate standalone atmosphere dedicated to recognizing and honoring student achievements throughout the year, free from any business meeting distractions which focuses solely on the students and their parents. What I would like to see is a separate achievement and recognition ceremony be held separate from the business meeting on a quarterly basis. Puts all the focus on the students and their parents instead of being pressed into a meeting. That way, parents can have the opportunity to spend time, take pictures with their children. It's all about them. That's what I'm looking at. Research the possibility and the feasibility of possibly catering it through, from, with a culinary arts student from Turner and Ten CTE program. I don't know if that's a possibility. I don't know if it's financially, you know, reasonable to do that. I don't know if you could get students after class, after school. I don't know. So that's all in a research basis. But that's where we're at. That's what I'm looking. You know, let it all be about the students instead of placed inside of a board meeting. As far as hosting this meeting quarterly, that, as we said, you, pick what much you want. That's not a major deal. That's pretty much where I am. I don't know how anybody else feels about it. Feel free to chime in.
We initially brought this up last year in March. And, you know, we asked Dr. Kramer if you and your staff would put some notes together. Unfortunately, you know, events overcame us, and we haven't got anything, any feedback. I just want to see if it's doable and how it would work if we could do that. Because like Mr. Wooster, I would rather see an event for the students a few times a year than every month, you know, generally mostly sitting here till, you know, 10:00, 10:30 at night, you know, after the meetings. And I know, you know, we've always done it this way, but I'm not a fan of that phrase. So I, every once in a while, I think it's good to take a look that, hey, are we doing it the right way for the times that we're in? And if the answer's yes, well, let's continue doing it. If the answer's no, let's, you know, let's make a change. But I think it's something that really needs to be looked at sooner rather than later so that we can make a good decision of how we want to do award ceremonies, you know, for our students. And I would not be opposed to seeing the kindergarten kids from all the schools here putting on? the kindergarten kids from all the schools here putting on whatever shows they have on the same night. Another night having, you know, a bunch of the high school kids coming in, showing what they have, and taking two, two or three hours that night instead of, you know, four or five hours at a school board meeting. But I wanna see if that's doable, from your perspective, Dr. Kramer, from your staff's perspective, before I commit to either way. But I would like to see it done separately without knowing any, anything else.
Are we, are we talking about awards and recognition, or Eye on Instruction, or both?
I'm talking both.
If I may, I'd just like to add to that. This would still, it would not be an official board meeting. No business would be being discussed, but as, as we talked about it, I think board members should be present, you know, for, for the, for the award ceremonies, for the recognition. It would still be streamed, so we would have to look at, you know, any extra, any additional cost for any, any employees that would be participating in that aspect. And that's pretty much it. Again, it's all about the students, recognizing them, giving them the stage all to themselves.
Okay, I can only speak for myself. I like the way it's being done now, but, uh, if, if the staff, and I understand the staff is not gonna say a lot tonight, but we probably need to do a survey for the county. Survey needs to go out and find out how the parents feel about this. I can understand what, what y'all are saying, and I respect that. Like I said, I like the way it's being done now, but if there is a better way of doing it, and if the parents wanna see it done a different way, then let's go with that, because ultimately, we work for the parents. We represent the parents, our constituents. So whatever the parents want, that's what we're gonna do. And then we can vote on it, but again, it's what the parents want. It's not what we want. That's all I have. Thank you.
It's an interesting idea. I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I hadn't really thought of that. Would you guys be amicable to a survey, see what parents felt about that?
No, absolutely, and that's, you know, I, I think that's what we brought up. We want the discussion. We don't wanna come out and say, hey, we, we wanna, you know, vote on this tonight. We want discussion to see what will work best. And it may turn out that the way we're doing it right now works best. But every once in a while, it's good to look inward and see, you know, am I doing the right thing? Am I doing the most productive thing? And am I doing it efficiently? And that's all we're asking.
Can we do a survey, Doc?
We can certainly do a survey, and if I may, I would certainly like to give our staff an opportunity to respond this. These are the individuals who, by and large, um, coordinate those efforts with our schools, with our families, with our students. So we'd certainly like to give, uh, Mrs. Briggs and Deputy Superintendent Getz an opportunity to respond. And we can certainly, if the board wishes, we serve its your pleasure. We will engage in further conversation, can certainly conduct a, uh, survey. But if you would, Ms. Briggs, Ms. Getz.
So my background is a former science teacher, so I like data. And I know one of the concerns that came up was that the achievers makes the meetings run a lot longer. So I went and looked at all of our meeting videos from 2024. And the average, including, we did have a couple of long meetings, long achievers. The average for achievers is about ten to fifteen minutes. And even with that, if you took away achievers, you still had a significant number of meetings that ran over three hours. So I'm hoping that the discussion about moving achievers is not because of it shortening the meetings, 'cause I, I don't think achievers is the issue. I do want to say that you see people come out here for achievers because you are the governing body of Alaway County Schools. I know you may feel like regular people up there, but you carry a lot of weight. You're in a prestigious position. And when they get an invitation, when parents get an invitation that their child is gonna be recognized at a board meeting, they drag that little child out here and granny, auntie, and everybody to come see that child, come up here in front of you and get a certificate and a pin and get their picture taken. That's very prestigious. And by doing it nightly, they get to come here, you get to see your constituents face to face. You get to chat with them before open session. You get to chat with them at breaks, you shake hands. And I don't know that you would have that opportunity in another setting. So I don't disagree with looking at it. I do like the idea of seeing, uh, getting some feedback. I probably would need to get a better idea of what the quarterly meeting would look like. I will say, if you're talking about moving Eye on Instruction and achievers to quarterly, you now are probably talking about a three to four hour event. And as soon as somebody's child is recognized, they're leaving. So whoever, unfortunately, is on that fourth hour is gonna sit through all of those recognitions, where the longest they've had to sit right now is thirty-five minutes. So I hope we will keep in mind what's best for the parents and the children. But we can certainly do a survey and find out what the feedback is. One thing Mr. Wooster brought up that I would, you didn't mention tonight, Mr. Wooster, we would not wanna change this until July because we wouldn't want students being recognized the rest of the year differently from how their peers were recognized the first half of the year. So, um, but yeah, we'll certainly do some digging into it, and we'll see if Ms. Getz has anything to add.
The only thing I would add is I, I love the idea of a survey, and I think that is something we should definitely look into doing. Eye on Instruction, I do think would be difficult to do that once a quarter. I think that could get very long. But we can, we can look at that and maybe think of a different way of doing it. I'm not sure. I love the idea of a survey. Let's see what our parents want.
Yeah, just one thing I would like to add to it. Another thing that I forgot was the Senior of the Month. It would not affect that. It would not change it in any way.
Thank you.
To your point, Mrs. Briggs, and I, I do appreciate the fact that this is yours. You own this, and you do, you do an outstanding job with it, so kudos to you. You know how you get the little reminder on this day on your little photo thing? So just last week, I got a reminder on my phone, and my little girl was in kindergarten, and we got an invite to the school board meeting that was up at
Yes.
the courthouse. And I watched a video, and I watched Ms. Carr, and I saw you and you and you, and these were all, I watched the video. I went back and watched the video and looked at the pictures, and I was like, I didn't know who any of these people were, but I do remember sitting there with my, my wife, watching my little girl up there going, this is pretty cool. Couldn't have been any more proud of my little girl up there in front of the school board. So your point is well taken. There is much to be said about having these folks come up here, um, in front of the board. So we'll move forward with, uh, do a little further investigative work, entertain a survey.
We'll take the survey, and, uh, we'll have a larger conversation. We'll come back and share those results with you.
Everybody good with that? All right.
Exactly what we're asking for.
Sounds good.
Thanks, ladies.
Will we stay in here?
Perhaps. That moves us over to, back at you again, Mr. Wooster. Twenty point three, this is the Board Priority Notification Proposal. It's always yours, sir.
And if I may, as we get ready for that, I'll ask the deputies and Mrs. Briggs, uh, over Communications to be here to respond to any questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, another proposal is the Board Priority Notification Chart. This is a fluid chart that I'm proposing, which consists of different priority levels, one, two, and three, either critical, moderate, or delayed. The type of incident, uh, notification method, and a notification timeframe based on severity level. So like, for example, priority, uh, level one priority would be within two hours of the event, the identified event. Just some standard, you know, things on here. What would be considered level one? Obviously, school shooting, school bombing, things of that nature. And what is it looking for? It's looking for an immediate notification. School board members would all be notified at the same time. No school board member is obviously gonna be mitigating the issue. And the original notification through text would be a what, when, and where. That's all I'm looking for, just what, when, where. Afterwards, then you can follow it up with an email, um, with a more detailed version. Level two, same thing, just a text message of what, when, where, description of the incident by email, but that notification level is within twenty-four hours. Level three would be notification within forty-eight hours with the same criteria. You know, what, when, where, brief overview of the incident. Depending on what the situation may be, if it is something that may potentially come to the board at a later date, we're not looking for names. We're not looking for identifiers. We're not looking for anything of that, of that nature. Just a very simple what, when, where. Okay? Now, in order to implement this, and I, I did go back after our conversation, made the changes, but I haven't submitted it yet. And I did move the two up from level three to level two. But in order for this to be implemented, we also have to make a change to policy CBA, which includes a line under major duties, qualifications and duties of the superintendent. This is under major duties. So it's just adding a line into there, uh, which states, provides notification of incidents to all school board members in accordance with CBA dash E. So that would be the major change right there. That's pretty much this whole thing in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions?
It's, um, Mr. Wooster, it's not an actual question, so to say. It's more on the lines of what we talked about earlier, notification time. I know you said you've already made some edits to it, because this is a fluid document that you were looking at. It's, uh, pinpointing, just like we did at last time we talked, it's pinpointing on the notification time. Of course, we already talked about the notification method, opening up not just texts and email, to be a phone call also. I think you just mentioned that also. And, uh, moving some of those that's in, uh, level three to a two, moving it up. But overall, it's the notification time period. And although, uh, as we talked, it should be a standard. It should be something that we can hold, something tangible, but at the same time, taking in consideration those situations that, um, might not, uh, give you the time to actually send out the information. And I noticed you said that all you needed was what's going on, um, what's location, and that's it. It was a situation that occurred today. I'm pretty sure that y'all already knew about it. I know the public already knew about it. We sent out a board memo. And, um, I was doing everything that I possibly could do in order to send out the board memo today concerning Smithville Middle School and the, uh, water issue that happened at Smithville Middle School. When I found out about the issue that was going on at Smithville Middle School, it had already, uh, probably had, uh, occurred for about maybe fifteen to twenty minutes. That's when I was notified that, uh, there was water, uh, leaking into the second floor by the principal. Once I heard that, first thing I was to do, you know, of course, I contacted Mr. Smith, the facilities coordinator, contacted ABM, uh, making sure that they were gonna logistically go over, cut the power off, I mean, cut the water off, different things of that nature. At that time, um, trying to coordinate, uh, different items like ServPro coming in, uh, Dr. Kulp, what is she doing with the children? What is she doing with the, uh, classes? Can they make it to lunch? Can they not make it to lunch? Do we need to actually coordinate transportation to pick these kids up, uh, take them home? All of those type of items were really, um, I guess, on the plate to, of decision. And at the same time, trying to put a plan together in order to take it to Dr. Kramer, so Dr. Kramer can have suitable information in order to make a decision. So something similar to that happens, and time goes by very quickly in situations like all of you, all of you know that. And so with that said, I just always want you to take a look at the, uh, notification time. Within two hours of the identified incident is a solid goal, but being held to a standard of it will be two hours or then, um, I just would like just take a look at that.
Yeah, by, by the example you just used, that would have been the forty-eight hours.
Got you. I understand, Bab, what, what you're saying with that. Cause it falls into level two.
Dr. Coleman, I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Getting, getting back to notification time, though, and, and level one, okay?
Level one.
Where it's critical, within two hours of the identified incident. And I understand exactly where you're coming from. And in most cases, I would say, within two hours of the incident being, you know, finishing up or being resolved.
Yes, sir.
There's gonna be some things that we're gonna have to know right away.
Absolutely.
The school shooting, gotta know that right away. Fire inside the school, yeah, we gotta know that fairly quickly, quick email. But most of these things, I, I think, within a couple hours after, after everything's been resolved, would, would that be something that would be, I don't wanna say easy to do, but easier? Would the staff be able to accomplish that? Because I, I don't wanna interfere with everything you have to do to get it resolved.
And, and, uh, let's just say, let's use a couple of the listed items in, in level one, critical.
Sure.
Um, school shooting.
Yeah.
A school shooting, uh, something of that nature, God forbid, within two hours, you will be notified by the whole community in less than thirty seconds. So, but at the same time, we're still, we as a school are still trying to work through a lot of the information that's going on. And the same thing as, uh, uh, fire, uh, uh, different things of that nature. You're gonna be notified because the community members know you. They know that you listened to their concerns, so they're gonna notify you right away. But getting the exact information that you need, the correct information that you need of what's going on, and what are we gonna do about that, that takes time to build. And some of it might be within thirty minutes. Some of it might be within twenty minutes. But there might be a couple of incidents where it kinda flows over the two-hour timeframe. So that's what I wanna massage a little bit more.
And like, for example, uh, the one with altercation resulting in physical injury to a student, is that any injury to a student? You know, I, I think there's varying levels of injury to a student, and in some cases, it might be very hard to notify within two hours, given the situation of what it is. And I would just be, like, what, what kind of in, injury? You know, I think I know in my mind what kind of injury you would wanna know, and we would absolutely inform you of those, but I, I may be wrong. I may not.
If it was changed to two hours of resolution, would that be?
That would be probably very helpful.
Would that work, Mr. Wooster?
For a level one, I would be opposed to that. Because that's pretty much after the fact. Granted, we're not gonna mitigate the issue, and like I said before, I mean, you know, we're not gonna be putting on bomb suits if you get a bomb threat. We're not gonna be turning wrenches if you've got a broken down school bus. But the bottom line is, like Dr. Coleman stated, it's gonna get out there. It's gonna be all over social media.
So what's?
We're gonna be, we're gonna be receiving phone calls, text messages, emails, which I always do. And parents are legitimately concerned, and they're asking me questions, and the only thing I can do is say, sorry, I'm not aware of it yet. And it should not be that way. If you get the what, when, where, then if a parent contacts me, all I have to do is say, we're aware of the situation. It is currently being mitigated, and your child is safe. That's what I'm looking for.
I mean, I think that's a great response regardless of how much information you do know.
But if I know nothing about it, I can't give that response.
I think you could say the school is working on the response, the school is addressing that. I, I don't have the information yet, but I'm sure you can contact the school, contact the school principal. I think that, I don't, I don't think that it looks negative or reflects negatively if you don't know all of the information that's happening in a school building. I, I don't think you would know all the information. I don't know all the information happening in, in a school building. Does that make sense?
It does, but maybe we're looking at things differently, 'cause I'm looking at a priority level of, you know, level one is severe.
I agree. School shooting, absolutely.
I won't deviate from, but then I think all board members should be notified at the same time with the same information.
Yep.
And again, it's just what, when, where. It's not that difficult to do.
The other, the other concern that I have, and I did share this, but just so the rest of the board members, I would be hesitant in some of the discipline issues of how much information is shared with all of you, because many times, those things could possibly come before you, and that would, that would hurt or harm the fact that you would then weigh in on that situation. So I would be very hesitant to share the detailed description. And like I shared, you know, when you think about confiscating vapes, for example, I do not know every single time a vape is confiscated at Smithfield High School. I do not have that information. Now, does it go through a procedure? Yes. But the school doesn't notify me within 24 hours every time a vape is confiscated. That would have to be a separate procedure that we then put on the schools of what they need to do. So that would take some doing to have all those notifications.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that I'm not flexible. Looking at the vapes, that's a level two. We talked about it just the other day. The only thing with that, with a vape, you could have a controlled substance in it. I'm willing to even do away with that. You know, just take it out completely. But the main thing I'm looking at is a level one. That would be the main. And I'm still sticking with the two-hour notification.
Can I offer a suggestion that maybe y'all could put something together that would go in the policy to help alleviate some of y'all's concerns and give us some wording to work with, and then we can, you know, take it from there and have discussions further? Would y'all?
Yeah. I think one of the things with the notification time, the way it's written, within two hours of the identified incident, I would be more comfortable if it was within two hours of notification of the incident. Say somebody posts a bomb threat on social media at 11 o'clock at night. You may be up at midnight, and someone emails you about it. What's going on? We've seen this. No one else knows about it. But based on this, the two-hour window starts ticking, so to speak, at 11 o'clock at night.
That would obviously be an exception. You know, outside of the normal operating hours of the school, if that's what you're talking about, then that would be an exception to it, because nobody's there to witness it or be notified.
So...
I think the point is, there's a lot of subjectivity. There's a lot of subjectivity.
Yeah, and pretty much if it's in black and white, and then you start saying, but in cases of, I think it just needs to be very clear and cover, say what we need it to say, and that's all I wanted to chime in.
That's just like a pipe breaks, middle of the night. All right, nobody's there. Next morning, you come to school, you open the doors, you got two foot of water in there. All right, well, that's when you first noticed it. I mean, that's not a major emergency here, but that's when you first noticed it. Now, what you're talking about is a totally different thing. And I think probably we need to sit down and go line item by line item and go through here and see what we can work out.
When you talk about the initial notification, Mr. Worcester, are you just like a pre-board memo? Something like that, an email from the clerk? Dr. Coleman walks by the clerk and says, "Hey, there's something just happened at Smithfield High," and she can send an email out to the board?
That's it.
Okay.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here, because we could, we could what if all night long, right? So I'll start by giving Dr. Kramer some credit. So you've been here, what, two and a half years there and about? At some point in time after you got here, it wasn't immediate, you, because you were probably getting peppered by questions by five different people repeatedly, because we are arguably a very engaged board outside of the norm, I think. So you implemented this board memo process.
If I may, we, it wasn't because of you all. We implemented that immediately as a result of my practices in a previous district and places I've worked. So you guys weren't even on the board when we started writing board memos to ensure that you, and not to cut you off, I just wanted to clarify that. That is a practice we implemented immediately. And to that point, we have written approximately 400 board memos, doing exactly some of the things you're asking about. In fact, we wrote two, at least two today, one regarding the water and one regarding a student who had to be transported in the ambulance. So I want to be very clear that much of what you're asking for, at least I'll speak to the public, we're writing things, we're bringing you in, we are, the clerk is sending text messages. So we are working feverishly to communicate with you, the board, about things that are happening. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, go ahead.
You allowed me this opportunity. So we've made very real efforts to be extremely communicative, to be as transparent as possible. And I know staff and I work hard to communicate with you all, and you're being notified at the same time. In fact, the board clerk is sending the board memos out to all of you, two, two, one, they all go out at the same time, and these things are happening constantly. We, I think we wrote approximately 160, 70 last year, and since I've been here, we've written approximately 400 board memos alone, not including text messages, et cetera. So I'm going to push back on the suggestion that, you know, we're not communicating. We absolutely are, and you and I agree to disagree, but we do communicate with you, the board, and I would hope that you all would appreciate those efforts.
May I jump in with my?
Yes, please, sir.
From my perspective, when you are drafting a particular policy, you want to provide directive to staff so that they can exercise some professional judgment. So as, as someone who is drafting, you have to strike that balance. On one hand, what you are trying to do, what you're trying to accomplish versus how much leeway you want to give staff. Because when you get too granular, it gets into very much, okay, well, how much time do I have? When do I have to do it, et cetera? So in situations like these, what I could see happening would be, and perhaps to strike that balance, like, look, in, so if I were to draft this for you, Mr. Worcester, I would say, "Look, what are your priorities?" And I understand what your priorities are. So the draft, the language can be something like this. "In serious situations such as bomb threats, school shooting, staff shall immediately inform the board. Less serious situations, staff shall promptly inform the board when practically possible." So if you draft that, very simple, but staff gets the point. So my suggestion would be, sit down and think about, okay, what are the priorities? How do I draft it in a way that recognizes their professionalism, as well as getting what you really want?
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mike.
And I know, I work in a location where I can't take my phone in. So I don't know if anybody else here works in that type of location. Sometimes I don't get a chance to check my emails until, a couple of days may go past and then I check them. But the clerk will text me, and I don't always have my school board phone with me, because I can't take any phones in the, in the location where I work. So when I get home, I can look, I look at my personal phone, or naturally, it's in my vehicle, I can look at it, and then I'm going to find out. But I might be 12 hours later, because I work 12 hours randomly. Whenever I'm on call, I might be anywhere. So this is good, but it's, I can't see holding the staff to meet these, these timeframes, because, I mean, at least for me, it won't do me any good anyway. I'll see it when I see it. But the clerk, if she knows it's something critical, she'll email it, I mean, she'll text me, and so I'll get it, but it's, I mean, two hours isn't going to do me any good, like tomorrow. I'm working for six hours short, but I won't, I won't have my phone, and I'll be teaching. So it won't do me any good for a two-hour, you know, get something, something happened in two hours. But if I go whatever, out of the building, and I look at my phone, then I'll have it. But emails and texts and everything, it just won't help me. And actually, the clerk will call me. If it's that critical, she will call and let me know, but then, again, I don't have my phone, so that's all I have. It's not going to help me.
I'm in the same boat. I can't take my phone where I work. So phone calls, text messages aren't an option for me. In our bylaws, it states pretty clearly that email is the preferred method of notification for the sake of the paper trail. I, I read this, and I do, I appreciate you, we talked about this once before, it's quite a bit different from the first, first draft of it I saw. There's a lot of subjectivity. I look at it, my initial reaction, and I would imagine that Mr. Colick and Mr. Cunningham would agree, it's got a very military feel to it. It's very common in the military. I don't know if you guys use that in the fire department or not, but this here is a, a, a pretty close swatch, that being like an op-rap reporting matrix. And it makes sense in a military community or a command. I also get the feel when I read this initially, that this looks like something perhaps the superintendent might give his staff on what he expects. It sounds like with all the comments, that we would all agree that by far and large, the stuff up here in level one, we would all expect some sort of a phone call. The stuff below, I would agree with our lawyer, that we got to give them some professional courtesy, that let them do their job as soon as practical notice, notify us. And I would say, by far and large, I mean, I'm looking at them, there's, you say 400, I believe you, there's a bunch. Yeah, there's, there is a ton of them. It's already happening, probably well inside this time requirement. So I would propose we take a, take a step back and look at this, and maybe consider what PAC gave us and rethink it a bit. The subjectivity, there's no way you could hold the superintendent accountable for this the way it's written. And I know you said it was, it was fluid. As is, it's, it's not something we could hold him accountable for, just because of the subjectivity. And then even more so, I don't understand the sense of urgency for a lot of them. As a board member, do I want to know that the HVAC went out at the middle school? Yep. If I get a phone call within 24 hours and say the HVAC's out in the middle school, what am I going to do about it? What are we going to do about it? Nothing. That's that man's problem. That's that man's problem. They got to figure that out. If a parent calls me and says, "Hey, bus broke down, my kid was stuck in the parking lot for three hours." I'm sorry, ma'am, let me call the superintendent, and I'll have him call you back. That's what I'm going to do. There's not a whole lot that as a board that I'm going to do with this stuff, and it's absolutely good to know. And you made a comment to me, and I keep going back to it, you said, "I'd like to know..." I asked you, why, why would I care how many times a school bus is late or there was a reroute of a school bus? And your, your comment was, "Well, I'd like to keep statistics." And something to the effect of, if it was a pattern, I want to know about the pattern as an issue. And I agree with that. After two and a half years, I personally, I've got enough trust and confidence in the man to say, if he's got problems in transportation, either that man, or that man, or one of those ladies is going to say, "We got a problem, and we need to address it." We hear him every month. So I don't know the way forward, but I don't think this is the exact answer. Any other thoughts, suggestions on how to go forward?
I think Mr. Worcester's on the right track with it, but the notification time is really the most difficult piece. And, you know, we've got to give deference to Dr. Kramer and his staff. Is this something that's doable without interrupting, you know, mitigating the issue? No, that's, that's huge. I do not want to be called, I don't want you to stop working to call me to say, "Hey, we got this going on, now we're going to go call an ambulance." No, no. Call me after everything's done.
And if I may chime in on that, I would say the same thing to our principals. Handle the emergency before you alert me. So I'm not going to be able to alert you, because I want the school to handle the emergency. And case in point of situations today, I said, "Dr. Coleman, don't waste time telling me about it, go handle it, and make certain that the issue's being addressed and mitigated. Then tell me what's going on, and then we will inform you, which is what occurs." So the timelines, I concur, are problematic. There's nothing on here that we perhaps wouldn't notify you and would like to exceed these, but to suggest that in every case, it's just not practical.
Dr. Kramer, the whole thing that sparked this, without going into detail, there was a situation where the board was not notified because you were not notified. That, to me, is a breakdown in the chain. That would be on your end, I mean, it's the chain of command. So what I'm looking at, if there's a breakdown, that needs to be fixed. It needs to be addressed, it needs to be fixed. What I'm looking at is providing expectations for board notification on specific items. Now, if you, if you or you're unable to direct somebody to notify the board because you're unaware, okay, that's, the board would hold you responsible for it, but you would have to address that down the chain. So that, that's one of the things I'm looking at.
May I respond?
Certainly.
So I concur. That is my responsibility, and I would implore you to allow that to be my responsibility with staff. And there was a breakdown, there will be breakdowns, as I conveyed to you via an email I sent to you. Hundreds of decisions are made every single day in our schools, in our classrooms. We're not going to know about everything. I said to you, we're human, we're not going to get it right 100% of the time. And when there's a breakdown, we will address those things, and in that case, we did, and we will continue to. But that is my responsibility, it's the responsibility of these individuals, it's the responsibility of our principals, who I'm sure are watching, and we will communicate with you. I would challenge any of you, you can check with any school division, I would guarantee you, we communicate with you as immediately as any. And we've had board members who were here prior to my arrival, and I, not casting aspersions on any superintendent, but I would share with you, and staff would tell you, we're communicating as much as they have in recent history. So we work hard to communicate all of this information with you. I think the challenge is to suggest that we're going to do this when the incident occurs within two hours. We may not, in every case, know about it in two hours. Again, as we aforementioned, I'd rather our staff focus on the issues at hand, as opposed to us merely communicating information that may not be completely accurate, because we're still addressing the issue. So I don't, I, let's be clear, I want to communicate this with you. Moreover, I think we are communicating all of these concerns with you as they occur in our schools. But to suggest, again, and I'm being redundant, that everything is going to happen within this time span, it's just not practical and realistic.
Dr. Kramer, would you be willing to sit down with me and go over this?
We met with you, staff met with you, I welcomed that opportunity. I wasn't able to meet with you this week because of a superintendent's meeting, but yes, let's be clear, we asked that you come in and have a meeting with staff, and you did. And unfortunately, the time didn't work for me, again, I had a superintendent's meeting, but I know you and, and board member Perkins met with our staff, and I appreciate that. But absolutely, I welcome that. I've never said no to you, and in fairness to you, you never said no to me. We've, we've met. We will agree to disagree on some of the specifics, and as Attorney PAC mentioned, and as... and as, uh, other board members have mentioned, to suggest that everything is going to occur this way or that way is where I will professionally disagree with you. But I welcome an opportunity to sit with you and meet with you, and we'll enlist the input of staff as well, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I'll get with you after the meeting and give you my dates.
I'll have you give them to the clerk, we'll follow order. So, uh, she will coordinate with my executive assistant, um, and we'll coordinate a time, yes.
Good deal, all right, so we'll table it for further discussion? Good? All right, let's wrap this up. Policies for first read, twenty point four, it's an informational. Um, one of those policies, we've already discussed, that was CBA?
CBA would go along with the previous discussion, so I would table that for now.
Aye, sir. The other one is BCE. Um, I, I submitted those recommendations for the agenda. Uh, it's simply because we created a policy committee. It, it one-lines that policy and adds that our policy committee is one of our standing committees. So, if there's any discussion on that, we can talk about it now, we can take it offline. But it's just for first read? Any comments?
I saw no issues with it whatsoever, it just clarifies it.
Right, anybody else?
Yeah, same, makes perfect sense.
Okay. Moving right along, we'll get to the last one here, board member comments. Let's go down the row, Mr. C.
I don't have any comments, I just wanna say Happy New Year to, uh, everyone out there, and, uh, have a great twenty twenty-five, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Perkins?
Shout out to Ms. Sullivan, who seems to always have these responses. And I, I don't know where she comes up with all of this information, but when we want some random fact, she just pops it out of her brain somewhere, so, thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Colick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as you know, in December, uh, fifth and sixth, I went to the SBMA Empower Ed Conference, and it was, uh, very interesting, a lot of good, uh, a lot of good discussions there. Uh, met the Lieutenant Governor, uh, the Attorney General, the Governor, uh, showed up and spoke. Um, so we, we had some discussions on good governance, uh, empowering the board, establishing effective board committees, um, mastering effective board communications, uh, the state of public education in Virginia right now, um, and, and quite a few other things. Um, it was very well presented, one of, one of the better ones that I've been to, in fact, they're all very good. There's gonna be another one, um, for anyone who's interested, on January twenty-second. Uh, the email's gone out, you should have an email. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to elaborate on that, since I was asked to go to that, and, um, that is all.
Mr. Worcester?
I'm fairly certain I've exhausted all of my comments during the meeting.
I'm probably right there with you, sir. Thanks, Dr. Kramer, staff, uh, deputy. Appreciate everybody coming out, and PAC, it's good seeing you here tonight. I know we hadn't had you here every night, would appreciate you making a drive down. Hope you felt like it was worth your drive. I'm glad you were here, sir. All right, let's call it a night, it's nine twenty-three, meeting is adjourned.